All right, so we'll start by calling the meeting to order. We'll begin with a
Before we call the order, I do want to share, Mr. Foose, that we have two sets of viewing audience. We have 20 people who are considered panelists. Right now, we're showing 128 people as attendees. That means that 128 people have logged on to watch this meeting, which is probably the largest number that the district may have had that I'm aware of at this point. For those who are viewing this meeting, this meeting will be recorded just for your information. We also want to make sure that if you are calling in by phone, that you can use star six to toggle between mute and unmute, star nine to raise your hand. Raising your hand feature, the raise your hand feature in the webinar allows attendees to raise their hands to indicate they need something from the host or the panelists. It is also the feature that when we get to the public speaking portion of the meeting, after the president reads the rules, you can use that feature to raise your hand to be called upon to speak. If you're using a computer tablet or smartphone, the raise your hand option is a part of the menu at the bottom of your device. Again, if you are using a phone, touch tone phone, a star six will be mute and unmute, and star nine is to raise your hand. At this point, Mr. President, you can have the secretary do the roll call.
Okay, I do want to state that this is a new voting meeting, so we have changed the voting order. So I will start with Ms. Duroff. When I look through the attendees, I did not see Ms. Duroff.
I don't see her as a panelist on yet.
Okay.
Dr. Benn, I think there was a message that might have popped up indicating that she said the meeting was full. So I'm not sure what that means, but I think I saw that.
That's not something that I'm aware of as even an issue. We don't have a limitation of for a panelist. She's a panelist.
Shall I move on?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Hogan?
Present.
Mrs. Denon?
I'm here, but for some reason, under my name on my screen is Brandon Foose's name, just to make a note of that.
That means that you've probably used his information to log in.
Mr. Brophy?
Here.
Ms. Nyman?
Here.
Mrs. McWharter?
Here.
Mr. Updegrove?
Here.
Mr. Hemingway? I also did not see Mr. Hemingway on the attendees. All right, Mr. Foose?
Here.
Ms. Denon, I just changed your name. Is that the right one?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, so did I complete our roll?
Yes, seven members, present, two absent currently.
Right, at this time, in keeping with how our meetings are normally run, we will now have Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. So if you'd like to join us, please stand, recite that pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic that stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next, we have announcement of previous executive session. The board just met this evening for one hour to discuss legal personnel matters. Third, item on the agenda, public comment period. Number one.
Mr. President, before you go to public comment, to the 100 participant, our attendee allotment is 100, and we've exceeded that number based on our account. So the district would have to go back and get a larger account. That's something we can discuss after this, but that is the message that's popping up, that we have more than 100 people who want to attend. And that's unfortunately something that we cannot fix without upgrading our account. Just an FYI.
All right, how are we feeling? Public comment period?
Public comment is, we have one person who's raised their hand. I have a amino. Amino?
Go ahead and read our this right here. So if we do sort out who's speaking, on behalf of the board, the school directors, I would like to welcome you to the welcome attendance and input from stakeholders to assist us with making recommendations, decisions related to the Borriertown area school district. Procedures and rules for public quotation are detailed in the ASD Board Policy 006. This document available at the meeting and on the ASD webinar. Participants properly registered on the signup sheet will be recognized by the presiding officer. Public comment period number is limited to topics on tonight's agenda. Participants must prep their comments by an announcement, a name, address, and group affiliation if that is appropriate. All statements, images, or comments shall be submitted to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question members individually, minutes of team members individually, school employees, members of the public individually. Note that we value and will compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please outside the realm of a public meeting if you have concern about an individual staff member or student. If your public comment includes a question, your bitten or member of his staff will be in contact with you to confirm your question and provide you information. Comments are limited three minutes and comment period to limited to 30 minutes. Individuals may indicate that they want to speak a second time if time left in the 30 minute period. Finally, note that we do record our board and committee meetings, and right now they're posted on, just on board docs. We request that if you wish to pictures or record this thing, it's already being recorded, yourself do so in a disruptive and discreet manner and use those materials respectfully and responsibly. Thank you. All right, so I have to ask a host, co-host, if we have somebody that would like to speak during public comment, if we can have them unmuted, keep track of the frame.
I see no raised hands at this time.
All right.
Again, if you are using a touch tone phone, you can do star nine. If you're using a computer, at the menu is part of the the Zoom feature will allow you to raise your hand, usually at the bottom of your screen or on your mobile device. I now see one attendee, a sharp, raise their hand. Mr. Sharp, you need to unmute your mic. There you go. Or Mrs. Sharp. A sharp. We can't hear you. Is your microphone turned on? Can't hear them. Your hand has gone down, Mr. President.
And that is relatively new way of conducting meetings. I suggest to any who did once, but may or with the technology or is simply not cool speaking in this form, to please send any questions to Dr. Benn and our leadership at the conclusion of the meeting. All right, let me move to the next item, which is the minutes. Then we have the approval of the minutes from March 24th. And I'd also like to add, any board members this evening and going forward using Zoom, these virtual meetings, for the sake of hollering at the board secretary and if you make a motion or a second, say your name after making that, it will just make it easier to record that and move. That being said, do we have a motion for the minutes?
McWharter moves, and also Mr. Foose, your voice is a little scratchy. I'm not sure if that, if there's anything you can do or not.
I can probably switch my headphones, which I'll try to do.
That might be a good idea.
All right, Denon, Denon seconds.
Proceed to a roll call vote then.
Should we ask if there's any questions or comments, Mr. President?
All right, you have any questions or comments in the meeting minutes. Take your answer. I'd say none. Proceed to the vote.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes, but we still cannot understand Mr. Foose, so something needs to be done there.
Mrs. McWharter?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next is the report of the president. I have none. We'll move to the secretary's report.
No report.
May I interrupt just for one moment? This is Mrs. McWharter. Can you just remind Mr. Hemingway how to unmute his phone? Is it star nine?
Star six. Star nine is to raise your hand, star six.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
All right, I went old school and just dolled in. Thank you.
That was Mr. Hemingway speaking?
Yes.
Is my audio better?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So we'll move to the solicitors' report.
I have no report.
Next, we are at the superintendent's report.
President, first let me apologize to those who tried too long in. We unfortunately exceeded our package limit. We will have to upgrade our package, which is something we can't do on the spot right now, so we apologize. Each, as you know, this is intended to give the board an update on the current status of the district as it relates to the changes that we have had to experience as a result of the COVID-19 epidemic. In essence, what I will cover in my report is to provide some context, some information about the challenge. Excuse me, one second to pause here. A little bit of the proclamation regarding, from the governor, our communications effort, and then we will proceed to a later item on the agenda, the departmental updates for the board. This is a little bit about the challenge.
Was there supposed to be audio with this presentation?
Yeah, I'm hearing nothing either.
Well.
Okay.
The current challenge is that we actually are flying a plane while we're trying to build it, unfortunately, and I think through executive session, I hope the board got a little bit of that from the information shared by legal counsel, where it's very difficult at this time to build it while we're flying it because things are constantly changing. And I would say, as a video clip tried to articulate, that the temperature is both brisk and hot because it's constantly changing. The truth of the matter is, we're not able to use our old methods. You know, we're having to create new tools and methods for the new and evolving problem that we're facing as a result of COVID-19. The main thing though is we're trying to build a plane that holds on to the dreams that a lot of our students have in our families. The challenge that we're trying to hold on to to meet the needs of our seniors, while also sustaining the basic and critical functions of the district is our reality. You know, at times, there's not much appreciation for the challenge that we are facing or understanding of the efforts to navigate this situation. And that's, you know, understandable because there's a lot of fear and uncertainty that is evolving with this situation, given it's about both, not only an educational issue, it's a financial issue, and it's a life health and safety issue for many people. We have ever evolving legislation and guidance and needs. We never know what's going to happen next with many things, whether it be associated with the rapid growth of COVID-19, federal action, state action, even local government decisions, while we're trying to meet the needs of our staff, our students, and our community and their concerns. At the end of the day, what motivates us to keep working and plugging along is that people matter, our students, our staff, and our community. I think there's been a high degree of professionalism that is shown by the team in Borriertown area school district, the love and ethics and the commitment to their work. The Borriertown school district, students, families, and community are what keep us going. And as frustrating as it has become, because of the unknown, we are committed to trying to help our students, whether it be this year's current senior class, or a new kindergartner, or a first grader, get to that same place ultimately, which is to get their high school diploma and be prepared for life after high school. Our challenge, as it began on March 13th, as you know, an order was given on March 12th, so a new day began on March 13th. Around COVID-19, it impacted our regular operations and the reality that schools and their connections to the economy. Some of the related issues are listed below. Schools were ordered to close by the governor. The reality is that schools are not closed. Our school buildings and facilities are closed, and that was done with short notice. As you'll see later, pretty much we had a press conference that was held at 2:00 PM. By 2:30, we received the order, and even then, there were several people who weren't sure that when the order was given to close Montgomery County, what that meant for Borriertown because we straddled two counties, and both IU's were scrambling to get an answer to that situation. We have a constant change and evolving status at the federal, state, county, and local municipality area. You have the issues with FF-CRA, which is a family-first coronavirus relief act, our special education challenges, the state, the Senate Bill 751, which now has become Act 13 of 2020. The challenge we're experiencing now, trying to still have meetings electronically. Communications has had to increase, and we have tried to do it with ease of access, and we keep learning as we go. And it's a work in progress. Most importantly, this is becoming a challenging work environment. What I hear from many staff is the fact that they're spending long hours working at home. There's a challenge with understanding or differentiating between when does a workday start and when does it end because they're in the same place, and there is no clock on this situation and challenge. Our department of staff members are working at a handicap in many cases because they're not working in familiar, well-equipped work environment. It depends on the capacity of their whole environment. In some cases, we were thinking ahead and deployed resources to staff.
For are you using?
In anticipation of something like this happening, but the order came so fast, we weren't able to complete that plan. We have a number of policies and practices that are making it us not be efficient for district operations during an emergency situation because they weren't built to operate in this type of situation. Borriertown School District has over 220 policies, specifically 226. Eighty-nine of those, 40%, are directly related to students and employees. Thirty percent of those policies, 68, apply to our finance, facilities, and operations, and policy considerations for the use of online resources. According to PSBA analysis, there are 32 different policies that address some areas of consideration for online learning. This is a very different place, and again, the system has not been designed to meet the needs that we're facing right now. One of the things that we are trying to be cognizant of is that decision-making can't be viewed independently from micro and or macro lens. It has to be both. It requires us to consider the current situation, the short-term impact and the long-term impact. What we do today will surely have an impact on what happens tomorrow, what happens the rest of the year, and I would argue that we are probably going to be dealing with this for two to three years at minimum after this. Some of our regular operations at the BA is managing our employees. We're still have to do recruitment. In fact, we're in the midst of trying to do interviews to fill certain positions. We're trying to be thoughtful about our retention and pay issues with our employees and how to hire necessary people to address the needs that we may have. We have a significant challenge with funding. We know that we're going to be facing some decline in revenues. We have to do significant budget financial analysis to try to get our hands wrapped around what is the significance of the impact, the legal implications that exist, and trying to make sure that we are legally defensible in our decisions. We're trying to manage our contracted services. Some of those are dependent upon us to stay in business. We continue to try to provide food nutritional services to those who are in need in our community. I give much appreciation to our staff that continues to serve breakfast and lunch meals to our students and their families. And of course, we've had to make a significant change with how we're going to approach teaching and learning, starting April 13th. And then most importantly, is the health and well-being and the management services of our employees. We have approximately 1,000 employees that we directly support in some form or fashion, whether it be they work directly for us or they are working through a contracted service. We are several millions of dollars of support into our community. If we struggle, we also impact our businesses around us. We have a direct impact on the economy and the workforce. We are a significant resource and support to our families and the community. At this time, we have also many of our parents who still are trying to work, also trying to manage caring for their children who are not home all day, and the same exists for our teachers, who are trying to be prepared to deliver instruction in a non-traditional format while also managing the needs of their family at home. The school closures are considered a dramatic measure with significant cost implications to individual families, businesses, and the economy at large. Often, schools are the largest employer, one of the largest employers in their jurisdiction, so we are an economic engine, and we also have a significant impact, as said, on families and businesses. The reality is, our system wasn't built to respond effectively to the current situation that we're dealing with. However, the laws for flexibility and operational management were given some flexibility by the government with this proclamation. I would just ask us to remember that we're trying to have a system that is usually built on a foundation like the systems iceberg. Back systems iceberg, you think of the mental models that are down at the bottom, which are the assumptions and the beliefs that our members have about the system and what we do. Then we have our actual structures, the design of our system, which again, the biggest challenge is our design is not equipped to meet the needs of our parents at the level that we've done in the past in this non-traditional format. Our patterns of a system of behavior have been totally disrupted, so that's now a challenge, and it makes it very difficult to anticipate what it is that we should be doing next. And of course, we have the constant changing of events, so we are in a significant reactionary mode and trying to get to a proactive mode as best we can. As a result of some of the things that I've mentioned, for those who, and it's attached to the agenda for those who want to see, the governor did take action by, when it came to education, and gave to and authorized the secretary of the Pennsylvania Department of Education in his sole discretion to suspend and waive any provisions of law and regulation, which the Pennsylvania Department of Education is authorized by law to administer. Now, while he's been given that authority, oftentimes, the school districts are also waiting for clarity of what of those laws and regulations are being waived so that we understand that when we take action, that we still are in compliance with what is expected. But he also went on to urge the governing bodies and executive offices of political subdivisions, which school districts are, to take action necessary to meet the current exigencies as legally authorized under this proclamation, without regard to those time-consuming procedures and formality normally prescribed by law. With that statement, it is also encouraging us to be much more efficient and effective in how we respond to this rapidly changing situation and be mindful of not being bogged down in the procedures and formalities that are normally prescribed by the law. Our communication is constant and evolving. We're using multiple methods, our website, our social media, Facebook and Twitter, direct phone calls, video, infinite campus, email, and text. It has been an exponential increase in demand and a need for access. We are going through a cycle where we, I characterize as pre-shutdown, initial shutdown, how we function during a continued shutdown, and at some point, we'll also have to transition to how do we make engagement happens when we go to pre-open and post-open phases. Coordination and collaboration with multiple external and internal agencies and departments have been sometimes very easy, other times very strained, and in some cases, very difficult to try to maintain connection because of, not because of unwillingness, but because of volume of information and tasks and duties that those agencies, as well as school districts, are having to go but because of volume of information and tasks and duties that those agencies, as well as school districts are having to go through. We have created what I would call a hub of information. You go through our website, we have created direct portals and platforms to make it easy for our families to find the information so they didn't have to search for it. And those four links on here are what we would encourage our parents to make sure they put in close attention to when trying to access information. That is a superintendent's report. What we have asked, and I've asked is that each of the cabinet members try to provide the board and the community some updates on what's happening in key areas of our district. But the main thing that I would say that you should walk away with is buildings are closed, facilities are closed, but a school district has not been closed. There's been a whole lot of work going on behind the scenes trying to get back to the best we can of providing core services and functions to our students, our families and our community. That's my report, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Is that, sorry, is that both items A and B?
Yes.
Okay.
A streamlined item, uh, I'm sorry, excuse me. B is the legislative update that has changed. That was making the board aware of some movement with legislation that I mentioned earlier that has, uh, may not be an issue now at this point in time. So there's no need for me to present that.
Okay. All right. So then next we have the item number nine, which is the topic of COVID nineteen update.
The first up would be human resources.
Hi, everyone. This is Mia Kim from Human Resources Officer. So I wanted to take a time to share some of the COVID-related updates. And in looking at this, what we did as a department is to look at three components. You know, things that H R is doing that's related to COVID nineteen closure and the regular H R operations and the special projects. So as many of you know, that although the district has been closed since March thirteenth, as per Governor Wuss' order, behind the scenes, Human Resources Department, like other departments in the district, has been very busy. And for H R, working remotely has been non-stop. You know, with ever-evolving guidelines to the new legislations, both at the federal and state level that has, that have labor relations and fiscal implications to the district. Under, under COVID nineteen-related work, as you can see, we've been busy with the following assignments. Emergency emerging under the, the governor was announcement of school closure, which occurred late afternoon on March twelfth. It did not provide much time for the district and let alone H R to notify various employee groups and third-party service providers that the school will be closing. And to the substitute employee groups, we did establish and send out web alert notifications via frontline absence management platform. And also initially, at the time, district thought the closure would be until March twenty-seventh. And in order to reassure our employees and staff, communication was sent out to the various groups ranging from long-term, extended and building substitute teachers that, and, um, that for the eleven days the district closed, they would be compensated or until the duration of the board-approved assignment date for them. And the same had applied to hourly classified employees. At the time of closure, our third-party service provider, who are commonly known as C R S employees, many of them who provide supports to our students with special needs and health services, also received communication that they would be compensated during the initial closure. And this communication was drafted and shared with C R S. Again, bear in mind, at the time, we thought it would be a temporary closure and we wanted to make sure that should, that you know, when the school district opened on March thirtieth, we wanted C R S employees to be ready and able to report to work. When the closure was extended beyond March twenty-seventh, upon the advisement of District Legal Council, another communication was drafted by H R and shared with C R S, which in turn was shared with C R S. Along with that, with COVID nineteen-related matters, you know, it was really important for H R to stay abreast of Center for Disease Control Safety Guidelines and Montgomery County Department of Health notices and information so that we could stay, inform our employees and administrations of the things that needed to be done to ensure the safety in this of our employees and to ensure that our building and facilities are, you know, well cleaned. Along with that, due to COVID nineteen pandemic, there was much about legislations that occurred and along with them came ever-evolving, changing guidelines. Um, some of you may have heard families first coronavirus response act that the federal government had issued, which provided COVID nineteen-related paid sick leave and expanded family medical leave act. There's also CARES Act, which is a coronavirus aid relief and economic security act, again, from the federal government, which has implications on the district and its independent contractor services. Then Act thirteen of twenty twenty, which was originally started out as Senate Bill seven fifty-one. This speaks to the compensation of school district employees beyond employee group protected in the P A school code section eleven fifty-three. And it's also important to note that H R needed to stay abreast of the interplay of Family First Coronavirus Response Act and that of the Act thirteen of twenty twenty. And the impact on labor management, especially regarding compensation of employees. And this is an example where the federal government created a mandate designed to help certain groups of employees. And at the same time, the state government created a mandate designed to ensure financial stability to district employees. However, with both of them intersecting, it does create a lot of misunderstanding even amongst the sharpest legal experts. And this is still being reviewed. Along with that, certainly with any new legislation that comes on, the H R department, you know, has a responsibility of making sure that our board directors and the community, along with all the administrative team and the employees are notified. This is especially true for F F C R A. Legally, we are required to notify all the district employees and we have done that. Along with that, we created new leave codes in our absence management platform. We also created a one-page leave request form for employees that are seeking this type of leave. And we also implemented a leave tracking system so that we can, you know, make sure that employees that qualify for this are, you know, that we keep track of their days. And since that, since this leave act became effective on April first, we've conducted conference calls with employees who are inquiring about them and in making sure that they are aware of what their rights are. And participation with, you know, various webinars and conference calls to make sure that, you know, H R is kept abreast of the any changing guidelines from the Department of Labor and Pennsylvania Department of Education. And those webinars are done on a weekly basis and conference calls as well with, you know, we have the pleasure of participating in both Montgomery County Intermediate and Brooks County Intermediate Unit H R Director sessions, along with, you know, the participation of solicitors and Pennsylvania school, Pennsylvania Association of School Personnel Administrations to address and share labor-related COVID nineteen issues. Along with that, because we're working remotely, the department is also hosting weekly Zoom meetings to review any relevant things that pertain to our responsibilities and employee benefits. And along with that, with this emergency closure, it's, we also need to have to generate reports from our absence management program so that we can manually reconcile employees accrued leave days in their leave bank. And that's done manually. We don't have any system that is able to speak to both the leave tracking system, along with the absence management. That comes with also in making sure that we are communicating with our employees that are impacted by COVID nineteen, such as a dependent care flexible spending, an increase regarding that and the F M L A days and how does that affect when the school is closed? Also, employees that are out on child-rearing leave, inquiring about their status as well. And also again, you know, reconciling the days in the leave bank. Along with that, because we, we had, we had some, you know, were anticipating that there might be some financial support from the government with respect to any emergency closures or the cleaning that we were doing during this time. So we were proactive, we proactively created new job codes within our time clock system for our hourly employees. So that meant that for custodians and maintenance staff, we created twelve job codes to each of those employees so that we can track the work that they're doing that's related to COVID nineteen. Along with that, we also had to revise job codes based on the information from business office to update the A S N numbers that's associated with each of those job codes. And as you know, our food service personnel have been working really diligently to provide breakfast and lunch to our students and their families. And we also created new job codes for those employees as well as they are serving in that capacity. And then with frontline absence management reports, we are maintaining that and also running a report on a daily basis, even though one would think that, you know, school's not in session. Why is that important? Believe it or not, we do have our other essential employees who are working remotely that their attendance is maintained in that platform as well. Along with that, we are maintaining a weekly webinars with the B A A leadership so that, you know, we're communicating effectively with them and address any concerns that they may have and, you know, also keeping them abreast of what's happening with, from the administration. And also we're maintaining an ongoing weekly communication with C R S with respect to their employee status and also service agreement options. And we are also working on identifying, we've identified essential employees and drafting expectations. A template letter has been drafted, explaining their functions and expectations and safety guidelines that we want them to follow while they are working in the district. And also when they're working remotely, safety guidelines is important, even when they're working from home. And also on making sure that hourly employees are following the Fair Labor Standards Act by, by recording the hours that they're working via online timekeeping platform that we have. And we also have requested telenet service information from Capital Blue and Tryon, that is our medical consult, uh, medical plan coverage broker. And basically, under the current medical plan, we do not offer telenet. But as you know, with COVID nineteen pandemic, many of our physicians are not seeing their patients in the office and wanting to make sure that that service is available. And we have been in communication with the association on that and hope to have an M O U presented to the board on that matter. Also, you know, we've, we've connected with Quest, our employee assistance program provider, to obtain information on mental health support to our employees, which will be going out shortly. And we're also in constant communication with the supervisors who have expressed concerns about their essential employees' health and concerns about work placement with respect to, you know, working under the COVID nineteen closure. And we're providing feedback to the supervisor's communication regarding their expectations from their staff during COVID nineteen cleaning. And along with that, there are other miscellaneous work that H R has been doing with, since COVID nineteen closure, which is making sure that we're coordinating with C R S for employees terminated who are not able to return the badge and fob. It's important for the state, the security of our facilities and providing additional mailing instructions and with email confirmations to employees who have not yet been able to submit their benefit payments prior to COVID nineteen. We've worked that out with the support of the business department and also utilizing the Dropbox at the ed center that is a secured way to provide payment information and any other information that needs to be submitted to H R. And, and then there's the ongoing regular work. So the, the, what I shared just pertains to COVID nineteen-related work. And so even though, again, the district facilities are closed, H R is working really hard behind the scenes and remotely. We're participating in ongoing Zoom meetings. Had, had we not been closed, these would have been in face-to-face meetings, you know, on weekly meetings. At times it's twice a week with the cabinet members, along with, you know, weekly meetings with the elementary and secondary principals and extended leadership meetings and H R meetings. You know, as you recall, a couple of weeks ago, we did, H R prepared the committee meeting. Also, along with, in a board meeting that was held on March twenty-fourth. And at the end of every board meeting, we do track board letters that need to be sent to employees that are affected by that and submission of weekly board reports, compiling payroll and processing payroll information. Payroll function is not isolated to business department. It is done in conjunction with H R. So we make sure that that's done correctly as well, as Dr. Ben had alluded to. We are still moving on with hiring process. There are some key administrative positions that are still, that will soon be taken. So we want to make sure that those positions are filled to minimize any transition challenging, challenges. And that also includes communicating with the previous interview candidates that are on hold due to the current status and also new hires who have yet to complete their onboarding process. We're, we're in constant communication with them. Also making sure that, you know, we are moving forward with the CFO and the Chief Human Resources Officers interviews that have been planned. And we are completing various forms and oftentimes this is done through email attachments. At times we are going into the office to fax those information as well, such as, you know, employment verification requests for various loan applications our employees are applying for and loan forgiveness, unemployment compensations that has us, we've seen uptick on that. Along with, our office has been, has submitted Department of Labor report for the month of March. We're still continuing to process graduate course requests, tuition reimbursements and are also clearance information that we are receiving from other employee groups. Processing invoice payments to vendors, responding to, you know, write to no request that had come up at the early start of the closure, that that's one sort of hold for now. And we are, you know, we've developed S A Qs, revised S A Qs with respect to professional call movement norms and communication. And we're continuing to process benefit-related tasks, you know. So we've had employees that have been out on workers' comp, maintaining their status and anyone that's ready to return to work. We're following up with them with their supervisors as well. Addressing any, you know, ask flat or pay deductions issues with employees who are returning back from work and making sure that deductions are adjusted and their payroll is set up correctly. And we're also following through with some of the F M L A requests that we are continuing to receive that is separate from that F F C R A request. And contacting to employee, contacting with employees, excuse me, so that they know where they are with respect to their request for F M L As. I'm coordinating approvals for accommodations as well for returning employees from uncompensated leave and generating a flexible spending balance, coordinating approvals with, again, with employees that are coming back and making sure that they're back on payroll status. And following through with long-term disability insurance information for our long-term substitutes whose assignments are ending, along with long-term disabilities for returning employees as well. And investigating, you know, we've had to investigate some of the employees who had issues with prescription errors. Those are typical things that we do. Those are typical things that we do, responding to emails with, for retired COBRA questions. And assisting employees with, you know, cancel, canceling of this district benefits due to unusual circumstances. And dependent information for benefits and informa, systems and responding to employee questions. Those are just ongoing, a regular HR work that we're doing. Along with that, even under COVID-19 closure, we are still proceeding with special projects such as a submit submission of ACA data upload to IRS. A participation in a webinar training or applicant tracking platform that we are designing and building that platform. Also participating in employee records, records platform and building that system as well. And creating new job codes to Time Clock Plus for CREST employees that was created. Then, you know, we were told that that was needed, so we eliminated them, but now they are needed. So that is an ongoing project that we're doing. So in a nutshell, you know, what I've highlighted are the, then the fact that while the district facilities may still be closed, a lot of work is still being done behind the scenes and in the HR department. So that concludes my part for HR update.
Mr. President, we will be bringing up the, I think the education is next, teaching and learning.
Yes.
Okay. And we have, this is being recorded, we will, I just was on with IT, we purchasing a larger package, moving up to the capacity of 500. But this is usually provided to us probably within an hour to two hours, recording of this from Zoom. And it will be uploaded to board docs where everyone can actually see the presentation and hear exactly what was said in totality who were not able to get in because we exceeded our capacity.
All right, Dr. Ben, should I go ahead and get started?
Do you see my screen?
I do see your screen.
All right.
I'm, I'm hoping the links work with your, with your presentation. But I wanted to start off by saying that, you know, this has been a very daunting task for the Office of Teaching and Learning, and I'm hoping that the presentation tonight really articulates the hard work that's happened behind the scenes to really maintain our instructional focus for our district. So if we can click to the, the next slide. I think this has been made a reference point multiple times tonight. I call it the 90-minute warning. We were given about 90 minutes to that infamous afternoon on March 12th, before we learned that all Montgomery County schools would be shutting down. So with that 90-minute notice, it was a very daunting task to figure out what was going to happen next and be thinking about what kinds of future instructional practices we would have in place. Since March 13th, which was the Friday, Friday the 13th, I hate to say, schools have been closed for students until further notice. The instructional guidelines that we were given from the state were somewhat direct in the beginning stages, but one maintained focal point for our district was really thinking about the instructional or the inequalities that could exist for parents, students and teachers with the resources in their home. We were also concerned about potentially violating free and appropriate education for our students with special education needs. That's often returned, termed as FAP. So the Boyertown area school district followed the guidance and guidelines presented from the state to help support meeting all the needs of our kids. So that initially, when we started this process, we weren't violating or creating unintentional consequences of inequitable or inequitable opportunities. So the next slide, we, starting on that Friday, worked out a platform that really focuses on ELA, English Language Arts, math, science, social studies. And we were able, able to even throw in Spanish with respect to the iXL platform. So as of this morning, and Dr. Ben, if you want to click on that link. And you click on the analytics, I don't know, it might not be an actual link to ours. As of this morning, we had over 2.7 million questions already answered in iXL over these three and a half weeks. And you can go back to the presentation, Dr. Ben.
Okay, I was gonna log in if you wanted to show it.
Oh yeah, if, yeah, if you want to, if you're able to do that, that would be great.
I'll bring it back later, go ahead.
Okay, as of this morning, around noon time, we had 2.7 million questions answered by our students throughout the district and over 16,000 hours spent from our students working in this platform. So by mid-week, the following week, which would have been about the 11th maybe of March, we had students already working in the platform, so we were moving ahead with our voluntary virtual learning. The Office of Teaching and Learning also gonna quickly show you what the platform actually looks like. So on this main page, this is for building or district administrators. You can see how many questions have actually been answered. So it shows you the number, and if Dr. Ben stays focused there, I would guarantee that that'll probably move up. See, it went to seven. So we have kids working in the platform actually as we speak. Down at the bottom, it shows a little pyramid with a number of skills that have been mastered. It shows how many skills were actually proficient, and then it also shows how many skills have been practiced. On the right-hand side, it actually shows how many hours our kids have spent in the platform. It breaks it apart between weekdays and weeknights. And then down at the bottom, you have the ability to drill down and look at each individual building and see how our students are working within the platform. So we're excited about the opportunity we were able to provide at a very early stage in this daunting process. So the second link that's on our, on the presentation is the Boyertown area school district voluntary virtual learning website. So if you click on that, the Office of Teaching and Learning, and I need to really give a huge shout, shout out to Dr. Sarah Obarrow, Jen Joyce and Ron Wales. We created a voluntary virtual learning opportunity website that was broken apart by grade levels. So Dr. Ben, just click on maybe grades three to five, just as a, as an opportunity to see the experiences that are here. So within this, we have our guidelines for iXL. And then if you go down to the bottom of the page or keep wheeling down a little bit, you also see the resources that we were able to provide for our grade level spans or bands to show opportunities that kids could actually be engaged in learning throughout the course of this, this closure. Epic is a big resource that has leveled instructional text for our kids. And if you keep wheeling down, Schoolastic, a lot of vendors have provided the opportunity for free online resources to help support districts. So we push this information out to our parents. And at this point in time, up until moving forward to April 13th, these were all considered to be voluntary experiences. So if you want to go back to the presentation, Dr. Ben. Okay, next slide. Initially, we were determined that we were going to be closed through this particular week. And the governor had given us guidance whether or not we were going to be returning brick and mortarly or virtually. So we determined because of the way the spring break was set up, that we were going to be returning regardless of virtual or brick and mortar on the 13th. So the state had provided guidelines with respect to what this movement towards continuity of education, and that is a new key term that we focused on within the district. And what does that look like? So it has two means, and I'm not going to read the slides for you. The presentation is available on board docs if you would like to reference this. But the two main components of it are planned instruction and then also enrichment and review. So the next slide talks about what that process would look like through an extended closure. You can go two directions. On the left-hand side, you go to a continuity of education, which we will officially be starting on April 13th, which leads us to planned instruction, or you could have gone down the right side where no instruction was involved. And we certainly did not want to do that for our, our students and our, our stakeholders within the district. So when you look at the considerations that are part of the process to, to think about what those next stages of the planning process would be, we had to factor in five key components, access to technology, instructional needs for all of our students, students receiving special education services, students who are English learners, and finally, students who are gifted. Appropriate and reasonable instruction when operating in good faith. There was no one-size-fits-all, and we decide, we need to decide what makes the best sense when it is all possible. But one of the first things that we did to help support that equity scenario is our high school students have access to their laptops at all times. They were given the opportunity a few years back to actually take their devices home, which made things super easy. Our middle school laptop, our middle school students are one-to-one, but they did not have the ability. We just have not made the decision to allow them to take their laptops home. So between Middle School East and Middle School West, we had over 1,500 laptops stored in classrooms and were stored in various ways. So again, another shout out to our custodial staff who has worked very diligently throughout our, our district and also our IT department. They work to go into each one of the classrooms and sanitize every laptop and push out specific policy updates that would allow the laptops to be utilized off-campus. So we set up a laptop distribution, which included some administrators, some IT departments, some custodians. And we handed out over a thousand laptops deployed to our families. We had to maintain our guidelines of, of social distancing. And it was, it was a very, it was a nine-to-two job. But within both buildings, we felt like we were able to deploy a lot of laptops to give students equitable opportunities. At the elementary school level, we are currently setting up, I think as of tomorrow, we are deploying laptops to our students who have IPs with special needs. They also had to go into those classrooms and sanitize and push out policies. We do not have enough devices at the elementary school level to offer them to all of our students who don't have access or connectivity. So we are in the process of actually creating packets of information that will be mailed home to, to those particular families. So what does it look like to plan professional learning for 500 teachers? So Dr. Ben, if you click on the first link. Hopefully you're able to access this. Dr. Ben, I know we were following each other around, but instead of going between building classrooms to go in on professional learning sessions, we had all of our administrators and other facilitators set up Zoom sessions for each grade level. So Dr. Ben, if you just want to wheel down, it just shows you an example of how we set up professional learning for our district last Monday. So each one of those Zoom links was a link to a professional learning session that involved a grade level, a department, or some different category that we were able to support what professional learning was going to take place. So it was actually a very unique experience and the first time ever that we've created a virtual learning, professional learning day for our teachers. So back to the presentation. The next link on that page is just an example, and if you just want to click, click on it quickly. What we did in the Office of Teaching and Learning is to create a template for, yeah, I figured we'd have some, some issues. So we'll, we'll back out of that. We created a template for the professional learning that would take place. So with each one of those Zoom sessions, we had the same Google slide presentation for all of our teachers, which worked out very well. The next two slides or the next two links that we don't, you can click on one of them. Yeah, I was worried about this, so I'll just explain through them. The websites that are on there were websites and opportunities set up for ongoing professional learning for our teachers. So if people wanted to learn information about Screencastify, Zoom, different elements, Google Classroom, we have created learning opportunities for our teachers. And we also were able to link with the BCIU and the B, Berks County Intermediate Unit has created a, an awful lot of online virtual experiences for our, our students as well.
Mr. Stoudt, it's to the board members and audience, it's important to note that what you saw that happened to me is part of our security features. So if you're not given rights to access somebody's information, it's another way that teaching and learning protects the access to the information and the resources to those people who've been authorized to get into the information.
Yep, absolutely. So the next, the next slide, I'm gonna guess you won't have access to either. But one of the things that was super exciting about the work that had taken place is we created a two-phase process. The first phase was really identifying, from April 13th on, we were looking at, we have eight instructional weeks to move forward. So we had our teachers prioritize, and there's a pre-K example there, there's an elementary example and a secondary example. Each one of those had our teachers prioritize, not necessarily eight specific essential skills, but looking at eight weeks, what are the prioritized essential skills over those eight weeks that our students would need to learn, that were going to be the best bang for our time that we had left. What was also exciting about this, the, the bottom link there would link you to a Phase Two example. Our Phase Two example was a template for our students to really identify where they left off. So because nobody was expecting on March 12th to not come back to school on March 13th, we created a template for our teachers to document where they left off with respect to the aligned standards that they were working on. So those were all examples of what that looks like. So if we move to the next slide. The overview that we gave to our teachers and students, looking at the week through March 30th, was our first professional learning virtual day. And all the skills that were going to be worked on during that time for our teachers, while, by the way, we were maintaining our voluntary virtual experiences for our students. What we're looking at for this particular week is looking at our targeted review and preparation for the new learning that is going to kick off on the 13th. And looking at moving to next Monday, when we truly start our new continuity of education plan, which is really looking at our students and teaching them new skills and having a little more accountability to what's happening for what's moving forward with our students. Next slide. This slide, I believe both of these links, the first one should work, and I'm not sure about the second one. But the state has required the district to present a continuity of education plan to the state for the purpose of looking at what kinds of resources and practices are we putting in place for our students to continue to move forward. So just posted live tonight, you will see our continuity of education website. On this webpage is Dr. Ben slides down. Tomorrow, we are going to be issuing letters, one letter from the senior high, one from each of our middle schools, and the same letter from each of our elementary schools that, that outlines what the continuity of education plan is for our district. Those will be links to the letters, they will be blasted out at approximately nine o'clock tomorrow morning. Also, the continuity of education OTL presentation that you're watching tonight, the link to that is also there. And then finally, Dr. Ben, if you want to click on the top link there, the continuity of education plan document. This is our formal document that has been crafted through the Office of Teaching and Learning in collaboration with the Special Education Department. And I'm not going to go into all the details, it's, it's a pretty lengthy document, but it outlines what we're doing as a district to help move our district forward with respect to Phase One, which was really looking at the voluntary virtual learning experiences and then moving into our true continuity of education plan, which is really looking at true moving students forward with instructional practices. The second link that's on the bottom there is really a link just to that draft. One key component, I made reference to this a little while ago, and I'll try to, I'll try to finish up here. But we were very concerned about our students who did not necessarily have connectivity or had devices. So we have had our teachers reach out and we have also provided lists of students that we feel did not either respond or we know don't have connectivity or device. So we are providing some paper pencil kinds of packet kind of learning that we are going to be sending home at the tail end of this week, if not the early part of next week, to try to make sure we're providing as much equity across our district as we possibly can. So the last slide that's part of the presentation is So the last slide that's part of the presentation is really looking at, this truly has been an unprecedented event. It's, it's a very daunting task when you think of looking at providing support to 500 teachers. It's unfortunate, you can hear the audio in Dr. Ben's video with building the plane and flying it at the same time, but it is truly looking at supporting our teachers to support our students as well. So we have 500 teachers and almost 7,000 students, and bringing everything together and just having people think outside the box to be as supportive as they can to support our, our students. So we wanted to thank everyone for truly trying to keep every, everyone in our people first, because it has been a daunting task. Any, and I have on mind, any questions?
Foose, any questions from the board?
See, I don't see any hands raised at the moment.
Can I, can I just ask one question real quick?
What?
Ms. Stone.
So in, in terms, in terms of getting connectivity to, to kids who, who live in certain parts of the district who may not have access to internet, I know, I know internally, I've been seeing communications about that, but maybe for parents and people who are watching, can you just explain how we address that?
You're talking about connectivity with a, like a provider?
Yeah, like internet, like access to internet.
Right.
Because I know, I know we had said, we had seen that we're going to be providing pen and pencil to, to, to students. So how are we supporting those who may not?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, and the pen and pencil is for the students that we have determined based upon our reaching out that had, that don't, that do not have connectivity. So what we have provided within our website and as far as resources, both Comcast and Service Electric provide discounted rates, and we provided the resources to look into those two elements. I do know that some of the cell phone service providers have also provided some cheap discounts with respect to data. But the unfortunate thing about looking at like hotspots and things like that, that allow opportunities for kids to have access, they are very difficult to come by right now. In fact, potentially even purchasing a device right now is very difficult to come by. And we do have devices at the elementary school level. We do not have a device for every student. So based upon the current situation with social distancing, we decided at the elementary school level to not necessarily extract all of the devices that we have, because we would provide inequalities to our students. And we decided to, you know, reach out to parents, see who has, who doesn't have, and then provide that paper pencil backdrop for them.
Thank you.
Mr. Foose?
Yes?
I'd like to answer a couple of questions that came in, and then I see Ms. Hogan has her hand up. Parents that are sending questions in, and I'm trying to respond to them while I'm managing the meeting. So I answer them for the record that you're receiving the letter that Mr. Stout referred to, answer what's happening with the seniors. It'll provide what's happening with grading in the letter that is going out tomorrow. So a lot of the questions that you put on here about the grades and what's happening with the seniors will be included in the high school letter, and the grading is included for all letters at all levels. So that information will be provided. I think once you get that, that'll answer a lot of questions. But of course, feel free to reach out to us after you receive the letter, if you have any further questions. The links to some parts of the presentation were protected for outsiders. So that's one question that came forward, so that it could not be accessible, because those are live links with regards to the work that our staff is doing. Mr. Stout, your team were, were given a shout out by someone in the public, and the information about special ed is also included in letters that are going directly to our special ed parents. Capture a lot of the questions I'm seeing on the screen at this point in time. And someone asked about PSA, all of those state exams are not applicable for this current school year.
Yes, there, there were two, there weren't many teachers that, and students, I'm sure, not, are disappointed by that information.
Ms. Hogan, excuse me, Mr. Foose, Ms. Hogan had her hand up.
Yes, Ms. Hogan.
Sorry. Yeah, I was just going to ask that someone answer the questions in the Q and A section. Dr. Ben did that, so I don't have any other comment.
Thank you, Dr. Ben.
Multitasking here. And again, we apologize to those participants. I think Allison tried to find a workaround with Facebook after talking to legal counsel. IT just informed me they've upgraded our package going forward to host up to 500 participants next time around. This is the largest we've had thus far. We're sitting at 138 participants at this point in time. And again, we apologize, but the link will be up. It's usually less than 24 hours with Zoom that will have everything that was said, as well as all the presentations when the presenter's going through it, for those people who could not access tonight. And we apologize.
Thank you for that. Mr. Stout, I just wanted to say that was a great presentation. I had a question real quick about what is the, like, if you just had to kind of estimate how much of the work that the Office of Teaching and Learning has been doing is driven by self-guided and trying to navigate this new terrain versus any guidance from the state or federal departments of education?
Well, I, I will give a huge shout out to my team. Like I said, Sarah Barrow, Jen Joyce, and Ron Wales, you know, spearheading, you know, a vision for what this looks like, really thinking about a framework. You know, it, it sounds like it might be somewhat of an easy process, but to not even evaluate where teachers left off on March 12th, to think about moving forward, you have to figure out where you left off with your students and what, what is a, an unbelievable task that has taken place that is, is again, another unprecedented event. When we start thinking about April, we really start thinking about PSAs and what kinds of skills that we try to get in place, or keystones that we try to get in place to, to make sure we hit everything from a content perspective. Well, that, that piece of the puzzle has been taken away from us this year. And again, I'm not saying I'm necessarily complaining about it, but it also forces our teachers and our team to think about those essential skills that we want our kids to acquire or be exposed to by the time the school year ends. Because to Dr. Ben's point in his report about, you know, once we're back to normalcy, which I'm not sure what normalcy is moving forward, we're going to have to reevaluate in September when we come back to school. Our normal pacing guides and everything that we have in place to help support instructional practices with our district have to be modified, because we're not coming in with the same background of experiences for our kids that we would have had with a normal year. So to answer your question about the guidance, it is, it is absolutely a compilation of bringing resources together and endless Zoom sessions. And to Dr. Ben's point, you know, hey, I will be the first to admit, I, I have never had the opportunity to work from home, and I'm always like, wow, this is really kind of cool, you know, to, to, I have been non-stop, almost 24/7, not knowing when that day starts, not knowing when that day ends. I, I try to take a walk around the, you know, the community just to get outside. It's, it's truly because people are reaching out. I literally, last week, I counted and I responded to over 500 emails in one week to help support, answer questions. And, and that is, that is good stuff, because people are asking questions, and it's really just bringing everyone together to try to figure out, you know, what are we doing and what's best for kids to get through these eight weeks?
Yeah, thank you for that. I, I took a, I actually tabulated my emails as well. I didn't quite reach your level, but I've also had unprecedented amounts of email. So I appreciate all that. Thank you.
What's interesting, it's 500 emails that I responded, that I wrote, but I don't even know how many I received. I wasn't, I wasn't going there.
All right. Do we have any other board questions? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Stout.
Thank you.
And it looks like the next update related to COVID-19 is for finance budgeting and facilities.
Okay. Hi for everybody who's attending tonight. My name is Carol Pitts, and I am the Chief Financial Officer. Dr. Ben, if you would please advance to the next slide. So tonight, I just want to talk about some of the things that have been going on behind the scenes. And much like Dr. Kim, I broke my tasks into three related areas. Certain ones are related to COVID-19, and these are actions we had to take as a result of the response to COVID-19. And I also have some special projects. These are things that we normally would be doing, but they may be a little bit more outside of the day-to-day operations. And then I want to talk about the day-to-day operations that are continuing and have continued to go on behind the scenes since March 13th. So we'll start with the COVID-19 related items. One of the things, we had a finance committee meeting on March 10th, and to me, everything was set and settled. We had budget numbers that I was comfortable with. I had had the presentation of the bids for our Adam, and I know that may not be a familiar term to everybody out there. That is our stadium project that we were moving forward to the voting meeting in March. And with the shutdown, with the shutdown of the construction, with the guidance for whether construction should move forward as if it's essential or not, we really had to evaluate that project and consider the legal and financial and operational considerations. So we did remove that vote from the voting meeting on the 24th. We're continuing to evaluate what we want to do with that project. That will go back on as an item of discussion for the April Finance Committee meeting. And also, we did have a variance, a temporary variance with the Culbordale Township, which allowed us to continue to operate with the stadium in the current configuration that it's in with portable toilets. And one of the things we wanted to see is if, if worse came to worse, and we needed to do that for another year, whether Culbordale Township would be willing to work with us. And I'm pleased to say they, they voted on, or discussed and voted on that meet, or I'm not sure if they voted on it, but they discussed and agreed to extend that variance for us for next year. So we do have that additional option that we can look at when we're making this determination. One of the things, we have had significant financial changes, both for what's going to happen for the remainder of the 1920 fiscal year, as well as what is going to happen in the 2021 budget. So one of the things that I did was prepare financial forecasts. This is something I normally would do every quarter, but we had done one fairly recently. It wasn't really time to do this. But given several possible scenarios, I prepared one, I think, within the first week that we had been closed, or maybe the second week, with various scenarios about choices that we might make, as well as whether we would be closed for the initial shorter period, or whether we would be closed for the remainder of the fiscal year. And we also put together some personnel cost forecasts for the board, because as we had mentioned earlier about those decisions before, before the legislation Act 13 was passed. So we put together cost forecasts for just our personnel. And if you would please go to the next slide, Dr. Ben. So one of the things we will be looking at for the April Finance Committee meeting is the impact on the 2021 budget. One of the things is having to make update, updating revenues when we really, and this is the biggest impact for us right now, updating revenues when we really don't have a clear picture of what is going to happen, just making the best recommendations we can, keeping in touch with other business managers, and sharing information also with PASBO, which is the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials, and the, the help and the estimates that they're making for us. So I have prepared the PowerPoint presentation for that, for the April Finance Committee meeting. Had been working with Cabinet as we talk about, well, the things we need to look at and revising that throughout. So that's been a fairly long process. That was started early after the closure as well. One of the very first things that we did was I worked, or mostly Mrs. Clinton from the Food Service Department, worked on putting together a food serving plan for our students. It, it's intended mostly for those who may be having financial difficulties during this time. However, the feeding is available to all of our residents who are 18 and under. So we, she developed a plan and worked with her staff. We've had a group of employees who have been supporting this effort of preparing and delivering meals. We also had to request a waiver from the state, because this is outside of the norm, to get reimbursement for those meals, and working to coordinate with the families in our district so that they know what about the availability. And participation has continued to grow. So we know the word is getting out there. That required that maybe we continue to do our food orders, and we might have to move food from buildings where it currently, food and supplies where it currently was residing into the high school where that, that feeding plan is being done out of. And we did adjust the plan as necessary as we, we get more information. We did find that it was probably more efficient and probably for less exposure to each other, to reduce a plan from a daily plan to a twice-a-week plan. So Dr. Ben, if you would please move on to the next slide. And I think several people have mentioned how the, we need to continue to follow the updates and evaluate the information that as it becomes clearer on the impact of our finances and our operations. And one of the things that Mr. Drescher in the Facilities Department has done is he had requested that we would have reduced trash pickup. Obviously, we're not producing as much trash as we can to help do some cost savings. And we will continue to look at other areas where we might be able to adjust some of our contracts to save some money. The Facilities Department, of course, is one of the most important departments during this time because of the deep cleaning that they're needing to do of our buildings. So I think Dr. Kim had touched on some of this a little bit. We can't just say, just go in there. We need to evaluate the safety measures to keep our staff safe, and also to make sure that the cleaning that we're using will do what we need it to do to help have a healthy environment for when our students do return to school. We need to communicate those things to the staff and continue to monitor the progress of the cleaning as it goes along. And as Mr. Stout had said, one of the biggest things that we've had to have some access to our buildings to get some of the instructional technology primarily out to our students, and the Facilities Department works to coordinate that to minimize contamination in the building. And Mr. Drescher was anticipating substantial completion of the deep cleaning as of today. He confirmed that with me earlier today. One of the other things we had to do in response to COVID-19 was to close our playgrounds. That is also to do our part in help minimizing the spread of the virus. In, in addition to that, we were able to do preventive maintenance on all of our air cleaners, and that included filter changes. And as Mr. Stout mentioned, this was a great team effort, supporting the middle school laptop pickup. That was in addition with the IT and the principals, the Office of OTL, the facility staff, and also Mrs. Batten from the Transportation Department helped with that effort as well. If you could please move to the next slide, Dr. Ben. What, I'll tell you what, when something like this happens, you learn a new thing almost every single day. I will tell you, until the last few weeks, I thought that all of the US mail that came into the district, came into the central office and then was distributed through inter-district mail. And I discovered that I was wrong, that there was deliveries directly to each of our buildings. So we did have to work with the Facilities Department and the courier for a once-a-week pickup, so that that mail gets brought into the building, into the district, and is not building up at the post offices. One of the things that concerns me is what if, what if I were to become ill? What if a family member was to become ill, and I would need to? What if a family member was to become ill and I would need to, I would need to not be available? So we're working on a continuity of, continuity planning for within our department, within the business office, and making sure that backup people have access to other platforms, and also to make sure that we're in constant communication about projects that we have ongoing so that somebody is not having to pick up something cold if someone were to have to be out in the case of an illness. We continue to coordinate our work schedules as we learn more and more things, just simple thing like the mail, that we are refining as necessary. And I didn't write this bullet very clearly, I realized as I was preparing for, for tonight. When I say canceled trips with contractors and in software, that is referring to our Transportation Department. We had some extracurricular trips, field trips that were already scheduled. And surprisingly enough, that's quite a bit of work to go in there, cancel it with the contractors, and also cancel it in our transportation software. Okay, Dr. Bennet, next slide, please. All right, so the next slide is those special projects that are just outside of the normal day-to-day operations. One of the things that we have been working on is the possibility of bond refinancing. And because of the quickly changing financial situation, I have been in contact with our financial advisor multiple times each week and discussing with him potential options in light of the current situation. You can't just say, I want to do, I want to refund bonds. There's requests for information that we have to provide. It's pretty extensive. And that will be due on April 17th. And there's a lot of paperwork that goes along with the bond financing as well. Dr. Kim had mentioned that we do have two key positions that we're working on hiring, Chief Financial and Chief Financial Officer and Chief Human Resources Officer. And Mr. Hayes from my office and I are involved in that process. And that is also a time-consuming process, evaluating resumes and then also participating in something new. We did our first remote interviews yesterday. And another outside, just kind of a regular, outside of the regular daily operations is working with the auditors to get a revised quote from them. And Mrs. Batten in the Transportation Department is working on the 2021 bus routes already. So she has to work with a lot of other people, instructional throughout the district to find out placements. And also, she's needing to adjust the bus routes for our rightsizing efforts. Also, our bus contractor had received, or had purchased, or leased, I guess, some new vehicles, and that needed to be added into our transportation software as well. So that was another special project. All right, Dr. Bennet, I'm ready for the next slide. In addition to these things, these cannot stop. So we have to make sure that our investments are available in liquid form for the, when we need them to do our payroll and to pay our bills. Weekly payroll has to, or bi-weekly payroll has to continue to happen. And this, and a lot of the things that we do have been impacted by the adjustments that we've had to make to, to do, to do work remotely. So we've had to have a lot of time to think about things, ask questions, answer questions, and adjust as we needed to. We had to respond to the changing rules for how we are going to pay our employees as well. The weekly check run continues to go as well. It is impacted by having to give approvals of bills remotely. We are trying to limit the amount of time that not only the business office staff, but members of other departments and buildings are in the building. We are only doing the US mail twice a week. And I guess I had already mentioned the limited time in the office. We also, we are very fortunate in that our deposits, we do have the ability to deposit checks remotely, similar to what a lot of people might have in their banking, their own personal banking, where they can take a picture of a check. We have a machine that allows us to make deposit remotely, but it does require somebody to be in the office to gather the US mail and to, to process those checks. So that, we are not doing the daily deposits that we had been doing. And we also have to record those receipts in our financial software, and that is impacted by us not being in the office together and sharing information. We do continue to prepare a weekly newsletter for the board, which is just an ongoing thing, but you'd be surprised at the amount of time and effort that does go into preparing that. This is sort of a, sort of a regular thing, a little bit of a special project. We do have a source of revenue that is related to public utilities, and that claim had to be submitted by April 1st. I had not done that, so of course, every time we do something new, that was another situation where I had to gain access to the online platform so that I could submit the claim on time so that we would get our revenue. Dr. Bennet, I'm ready for the next one. So we have to, there's something called unclaimed property. Probably a lot of people have heard that. It is a report that we have to do annually, and it is due on April 15th. Mr. Hayes will be working on that, and that'll be the first time that he's done that task himself. So he's learning and also working remotely. Another thing that we have to do that's just ongoing operations is every quarter, we have to report to the Department of Ed how much we spent for our title grants. So that will be due April 14th. And in April 1st, we had a debt service payment done, and we have, due, and we have another one due May 1st. So we have to make sure that those payments are processed and done. And then as a result of that, we do get rental reimbursements. So we do have to apply to the Department of Education for those rental reimbursements. We continue to prepare agendas for board meeting and committee meetings. And again, surprisingly, how much time and effort has to go into making sure that everything is correct and that we are thinking everything through, and we have the proper documentation. Additionally, we've had a couple of newly scheduled meetings and newly scheduled remote meetings, which required us to advertise those meetings as well. We've had some meetings close together, and that requires preparing minutes on a shorter turnaround than what we're used to. And I'm ready for the next one. I think the next one is what the Facilities Department has been able to do because, because there have not been as many people in the buildings, we were able to, the Facilities Department has been able to work on work orders. They are able to get into what normally might be some inaccessible areas. So they were able to do some of the work orders that they might have had to defer until the summer when school was not in session. And they've also been able to reduce the backlog of those work orders. They continue to clean the areas outside the buildings, to mow the lawn, and to make sure that weeds and everything are cleaned up. They've also had the opportunity to do some preventive maintenance on their equipment. Oh, I don't know. I think we skipped a, skipped a slide. So we're back to another, oh, we'll, we'll finish this slide. The transportation vehicles have also had the opportunity, these are our vans, to have some maintenance done on them as well, to include cleaning. And another report that was due, or that is due from the Transportation Department is the bus evacuation drill. So we continue, and Dr. Bennet, do you mind going back to that slide? Because there are some other things on there. One back, one more, I think. Yes, so we have to continue some of the purchasing process. We are ordering supplies to support IT operations, to support the facilities operations, and we need to, and even some of the instructional things that we've had to do. So we have to continue to, our staff is entering requisitions and various levels are approving those. And even though our real estate taxes, the regular real estate taxes were done at the end of December, there's still our interim bills, so our office has to process the monthly tax collector reports to us. And as people are selling real estate, they have to get a tax certificate, certification as part of their closing process, and we do have to respond to those. We are getting assessment changes. We get them monthly from Montgomery County and quarterly from Berks County. So we need to update our tax software with that. So our assessments will be updated for when we produce our real estate tax bills in July. And we do have some of those delinquent tax payments that we process in-house, and we're continuing to do that. And I have census there. That's not the US Census, but that has to do with our per capita tax. We do have census takers out in our, our townships, and they, they do the census. They send in the forms to our office, and we have to process those in our tax software. And it's also in preparation for the tax bills that will go out in July. So it is continuing to be a very busy time. It is a challenging time because of the adjustments we've had to make to having less time in the office to get that physical paperwork that we're used to having and to come up with solutions about how we can work efficiently remotely. That concludes what I was going to talk about for how we've been working during the building closures.
So if any, if any board members have questions at this time, please use the raise hand feature. I just want to take a moment to first say thank you to Ms. Pitts. That was a great update. I know you've been doing a lot of, a lot of work and that you have already announced your retirement. And this was not part of the deal for you. So I appreciate all the extra work that you're putting in for us right now. We are very fortunate to have somebody as experienced and as professional as you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Foose. I got to tell you, I feel inadequate all the time, or some of the time with all the changes that are coming, but I appreciate your kind words.
We're absolutely blessed to have you. And I also wanted to mention and thank Dr. Bennet. I know that the, this is relatively new terrain and the Q and A, we haven't really discussed how to, how to manage the Q and A because it's not really part of the public comment function. But Dr. Bennet has been doing Yeoman's job of, of trying to respond to those. But just want to remind folks that they can submit questions through email and through the district website. And that we do have, we're maintaining the public comment periods. We already had the first. We have a second coming up. And that's probably the best way to get any, anything that you would like to share expressed. But I appreciate all the effort that's going on, trying to adapt to this. So are there any questions from the board? Looks like there is one from Ms. Nyman.
Yes, Mrs. Pitts was saying about our custodial staff working in that. Are they still working and what are they doing at this time?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear which staff?
Custodial staff.
Custodial staff, yes, they are. I will say that Mr. Drescher has taken a look, because when we're talking about, talking about the substantial completion, we have the essential employees, and we're still working through this plan right now. So I hope I'm okay to talk about, Dr. Bennet, you can stop me if I'm not. But we are, have categories of essential employees, and they have been in the on-duty category currently. And we are looking at having a plan in place that we can move them more to an on-call essential staff so that we still have to have building checks to make sure that we don't have any boilers blowing up while we're not occupying the buildings. We still have to make sure that the exterior of the buildings is maintained. But Mr. Drescher is looking at a plan where he can schedule people. In addition to, you know, putting them in, in an on-call situation, it also will limit contact with other employees, which will help us address trying to limit the spread of the virus. So we are looking at changing that status right now.
Okay, also with them going in and out, are they disrupting the sterilization of the buildings?
Well, the answer to that is, is no. They are, they continue to do what they're supposed to do with regards to keeping the building clean. But there are some things you have to do. For instance, we have to go in the building to serve food. So you have cafeteria workers going in. So we have tried to isolate certain buildings and minimize which buildings and where they have access to the building.
All right, are there, are there any other questions from board members at this time? All right, not seeing any additional ones. Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much, Ms. Pitts. And next, we have Student Services and Safety for an update.
Last but not least, and I do have about 10 slides, and I know that we are getting short on time. So I will try to give you an overview without, you know, going through each bulleted item. So as you know, I oversee safety and security, pupil services. And as part of pupil services, I am directly supervising with Dr. Obarro in the Office of Teaching and Learning, our English language learners. I do supervise our nurses, the counseling office, and special education. So a lot of what I have been doing is making sure that we are taking legal guidance from both the Fox Rothschild and an attorney who represents the Berks County Intermediate Unit with regards to what we're doing. But as we start to look at safety specifically, as you know, we had received $495,000 prior to our school buildings closing. That was to be used for safety-related expenses. Part of those costs were going to go into the elementary school building's security camera project. So at this time, we're evaluating the feasibility of moving forward with that project, being that IT is pretty overwhelmed with supporting the Office of Teaching and Learning and getting our students prepared to receive instructions. So we can postpone it a little bit. I have some flexibility with regards to the timeline of using and expending that money. But it's not someplace where we need to be putting our energies right now. But with regards to other safety-related work, we are using our school police officer, Officer Perez. And I do have weekly communication with him. I've coordinated him to participate in the school meal distribution, making sure that, you know, everyone is orderly and, you know, pitching in wherever it is that he needs to be supporting that distribution of the meals. Originally, it was really to establish a line through the high school, making sure that people were, you know, traveling properly. We also have him helping to deliver any materials that needs to go back out to students and/or staff as we're preparing to educate our neediest population of students. He also is continuing to support Kristen Horton, our counseling coordinator. She is making sure that our homeless families' needs are being met. You know, these families are doubled up in a lot of situations, do not have connectivity, and, you know, are probably our neediest group of people that we need to make sure that we're getting meals and schoolwork too. So he has been supporting her, along with supporting our English language learners, our teacher, Mrs. O'Leary, with communication with one of our new families that came in. We have a Spanish-speaking family that just arrived. They've not been assigned to a classroom yet. There's been a huge breakdown in communication. So Officer Perez is working as translator and helping to get that family the things that they are in need of. So Officer Perez is working as translator and helping to get that family the things that they are in need of. I do want to, you know, give a shout out to my team as well, working with Officer Perez, Kristen Horton, Kalen Bartman, Dulce, Sherry Pivotoe, Lucy Kincaid, and the certified school nurses. They've all been a huge support. I see them more now than when we were in the office through Zoom. But it's necessary in order to make sure that we are moving in the right direction. With regards to our English language learning group, I think this might be the easiest group that we have been able to deliver instruction to and keep the continuity of education moving. Because Mrs. O'Leary, our teacher, she has been working in the realm of virtual realm with these students as well as providing all sorts of accommodations. So, and she has ongoing relationships with these students. So this group of students probably are least affected by the schools closed, being closed. But she's continuing to, you know, work through different barriers that she, you know, is confronted with and working with, again, the Office of Teaching and Learning. Much of everything that we're doing does deal with collaboration with OTL. Dr. Ben, I'm all the way on to slide four, getting ready for nursing now. And this has probably been a very challenging area for us. You know, we follow the legislative updates and evaluate impact as it pertains to our nurses and school building health rooms. Because of the limited ability to support essential staff, our nurses have been pretty much working from home and coming into the school in the very beginning to make sure that we are, you know, redistributing, distributing medications back to families. Because we do hold a bulk of the families' medications because the students are with us five days a week, they send the larger part of their medication, their prescription medication, to the schools. So it was an undertaking to make sure that we were getting these medications back to families. And we then were starting to look at EpiPens and inhalers because those things become much harder for families to get. And since we had that supply, we had to go back in again to make sure that, you know, we could deliver those medications as well. So our nurses had been working very hard and reaching out to all the families, making sure that they had what they needed at home as the schools being, or the school buildings being closed was continuing to grow a little bit longer. We were not able to support the men and women in our buildings due to, again, the limited availability of adequate resources such as touchless thermometers and PPE. So it was safer for them to continue to man their computers at home. Along with the nurses running health rooms, they also are responsible for Chapter 15 agreements as they pertain to students with medical plans. So like an IEP, like other things that are legally defensible, they need to be annually reviewed. So I am continuing to get information to our nurses and how they are supposed to continue to uphold their Chapter 15 agreements for these students. Next slide, Dr. Ben. Also, our coordinated our certified school nurses in establishing office hours and supports from IT. Part of what they do is managed on the computer, but there's a lot of records that they can't access that they need right now that are paper and pencil and in their health rooms. So we're trying to make sure that we can obtain as much as possible for them to continue to support the ongoing registration of students coming in. We do have a flux of students that are getting placed into mental health facilities during this time. I'm seeing probably two a week where students are getting admitted into acute and subacute hospital or partial programs. So our nurses are responsible for getting those immunizations and medical records out to those facilities. That has been a very difficult task for them to do. As part of ongoing work that we're doing, we're still supporting registration. Like I said, they're getting on top of identifying students that are going to be changing buildings as a result of redistricting. And they're also staying on top of our kindergarten registrations because that can become a little bit overwhelming as they were working throughout the school year. And this gives them time to, you know, get on top of that and make sure that everybody has what they need in order to start the school year. You can change, next slide, Dr. Ben. We're going to move on to school counselors. Challenging area, Kristen Horton has been a saint in this area. And she has coordinated, making sure that the counselors are posting on their emails, their office hours, so that students know how to get ahold of them, when to get ahold of them. We are also making sure that if they're not available, that there's an emergency number or directions, you know, for anybody that needs some extra support or those students that might be in crises. We have been getting out lists to families, letting them know all of the resources in their areas on the Berks and the Montgomery side and reminding them to utilize, you know, 911 if it's a real emergency. And if they have someone that they're concerned about, to use our safe to say to be able to report, you know, things that they're concerned about. So we also have been challenged with getting help to those students in crises. We have, our counselors are seeing things through Zoom. So there are some CYS calls being made. And there's information that's being shared with them. So, yeah, there's many of the students' mental health problems that we see during the school day. We're still seeing now remotely. The difference is that we're not able to see them face-to-face on a regular basis. So that becomes challenging as you start to look at students who might be showing any kind of suicide ideation. We are working with our school-based counselors as well. They're continuing to reach out to the students. And we have been sending letters to the elementary school students, letting them know that their school counselors are thinking of them, that they, you know, miss them. And again, you know, providing some additional resources for them. We are providing mental health supports for families. Again, providing counseling, mental health, suicide support resources. We've distributed them and we have them on our website as well. Next slide, Dr. Ben. School counselors, again, we are collaborating with the Office of Teaching and Learning on the continuity of education as it pertains to school counselor lessons. Again, talking about the communication with our families. And in addition, we've been compiling free webinars for our counselors, for our nurses, things that, to help them, you know, with this type of delivery of counseling and nursing. Okay, special education. This is probably where we're spending the most amount of time. Next slide, Dr. Ben. And this is where we're probably getting the least direction, would you say, Mr. Stoltanik? That this is definitely building a plane while we're flying. And even with good faith language, we may face significant comp ed and legal fees in the future as a result of COVID-19. Our special education team is working tirelessly to provide FAPE, which is Free Appropriate Public Education, to all students with an IEP. I have daily communication with Kalen Bartman and Dulce Rothermell. We are constantly in conversation with someone from Jeff's office trying to obtain legal opinion on things like utilization of Zoom for our meetings as it pertains to holding IEP meetings, delivering instruction for their IEP, providing school-based counseling, therapy sessions, working on the delivery of related services such as occupational therapy, physical therapy and speech. Because we know that we need to do the best job that we can at delivering a free, appropriate public education, I have worked with the IT department. And we are going to be distributing laptops to all elementary special ed students in order to make sure that we are, you know, leveraging their access to education. And hopefully, we would be able to contain the amount of litigation due to the challenges of educating our students with disabilities, you know, outside of brick and mortar school buildings. So we're, you know, working, I would have to say, night and day with regards to how are we going to be delivering this education and trying to make sure that we're meeting our students' IEPs. We are also looking, you know, for legal opinion on the continuation of billing for access where we can, where it's applicable, through our speech programs, our physical therapy and our occupational therapy. We're in the process of identifying necessary paraprofessional staff that we are going to need to continue to support the delivery of education to our neediest population of students, like our life skills students, our autistic support students, and even our emotional support students. Our people, you know, since the last day in school, you know, continue to conduct IEP meetings, whether they were doing it virtually or through a phone conference. We're doing everything we can to maintain, you know, compliance. Our school psychologists are doing the same. The only thing that they can't do is the testing. I don't believe that we've gotten any direction as far as being able to legally test via Zoom. So testing will have to be put off. But we are reviewing evaluations and, you know, moving forward the best that we can. And, you know, where we need to use our school psychologists in other areas, we are. We are organizing the collection and distribution of necessary learning materials for our teachers. So many of our students who are sitting in classrooms are not only gaining their education from their classroom teachers, but they're usually getting some specific instruction from their special ed teacher. It could be direct instruction in reading. And our teachers need to have those materials in order to be able to provide that level of education. So we're working on, we obtained that stuff. And Mrs. Bartman has been, you know, working out of her garage and delivering that, those materials to her teachers. Again, my ladies are having ongoing meetings with their special education teachers and their related service providers, you know, and getting ready for the programming and education to start on Monday, the 13th. Last slide, just, you know, again, you know, we're preparing, we're taking supports through the BCIU countywide meetings that my ladies are attending. We're collaborating with the Office of Teaching and Learning. We're attending the principal and leadership Zoom meetings. We're trying to identify waivers for virtual learning for special education students as needed. We do have a letter that we've put together to send out to families. We're working on compiling that and making sure that we're identifying the services that teachers will be delivering to their students. I'm on the side, I'm working with alternative education programs where our students are enrolled and making sure that they're following much of what we're doing and making sure that they're getting instruction ready to deliver to our students. And then we're just doing the normal things of answering emails. I haven't counted. I can tell you that on any given day, there's 50 that are still sitting there. So it's just, it's something that I've never seen in my 26 years of education. And don't wish it on anyone. So we're just continuing to, you know, work hard, keep our heads above the water, make sure that, we're trying to, you know, stay compliant. And we're doing this all without very little direction from the state. Thank you.
Mr. Foose, we had a question from Mrs. Deroff, I think, from the facilities question possibly that we missed.
Yes, let's take hers and then anybody else after that, if you want to raise your hand a while.
Okay, first, I want to thank everyone that gave presentations tonight. They were all wonderful and everybody is really, really working hard with no direction apparently from the state and federal. And I do appreciate that, and I'm sure the families and children do. Just had a couple of questions. Are the janitors and maintenance and I guess the buildings and grounds people, do they all now have the proper equipment, clothing, gear, masks, gowns, the whole nine yards to wear that they should have? Are we still short?
Is Carol still, Carol here, Charlie still on?
Charlie was on. I know that we had a lot of it. There were some other things like gowns. I think he did have to put in an order for those. He was able to find a supplier. I don't know that he's still on. Oh, yes, he is still on. So hopefully, he can answer that a little bit better than I can.
I knew about the gowns being a backordered issue after talking to Dr. Kim. And I just allowed Charlie, you can, you can talk.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so the gowns just came in a couple of days ago. We have the foot gear, we have masks, although we're very low on masks. Plenty of gloves. And the gowns that we have have the hoods as well. So we are pretty good to go here, with the exception of the mask. If something should happen in the next day or so before we get new ones, we are very limited on masks.
Okay, I just want to make sure our people are being taken care of.
Yes, yes.
The other, thank you. The other thing I wanted to ask is, well, actually two more things. Is there any contacts we have that we're obligated to take, use, get, that we aren't using right now that could be better used somewhere else? Such as, i.e. food, that would go better to a food pantry? Because the food that we have even now that's stocked is not going to, it's going to get outdated, I would think, for next year.
It is my understanding that...
Unless you anticipate that we're going back to school this year yet.
It is my understanding that even earlier, and Carol could speak to recently, we had actually taken food to, now I can't think of the name of the place now.
Multi-service, I think.
Multi-service center. I do know that I received a communication from food service too that they were monitoring their ordering and trying to make it fit the needs so we don't reestablish an unnecessary stock. That's what I know at this point. Anything else, Carol?
Yeah, I think that Mrs. Clinton is trying to look at needs, you know, balance what, you know, ordering new versus what we currently have on stock in different schools. So part of what she's doing is relocating as necessary. But I will mention that too. I'm sure she is keeping an eye on the dates. I know that's very important for them.
Her last communication to me was that they were trying to match it up to avoid what I think Mrs. Deroff was referring to, any waste. Part of her challenge is trying to make sure she meets the demand and also don't overorder because we don't want to show up who can't receive food. They have modified to twice a week. We start off with four days a week with the process to get it started for those families that may have gone without when we had the initial closure. They've gone to two days to one to help honor the stay-at-home order. And then they package it so that there are multiple meals, breakfast and lunch, given to sustain people through the days until the next day that they come for pickup, which I think is also helping with continuity of services to reduce any waste.
Okay, and paper supplies, we all keep getting that stuff in right now, or we do? Garbage services, is there any, what I'm after, if there's any contract, I know we have to pay them. And that's fine. But after a while, we're going to, if, I don't know when it's scheduled. I don't see your contracts. I'm just asking, sometimes there's little things that all add up to big money at the end. things that all add up to big money at the end of the, of the year that we could divert somewhere else if we're stuck to take them and save us all the trouble and hassle of moving them around.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Deroff, are you referring, you said paper?
Well, like toilet paper, paper towels. Everybody knows what that's like when you go to the grocery store right now. There isn't any. I don't know when your items come in, if they're scheduled ahead of time, if anybody thought to stop the schedule or we have a stockpile.
No, and I'll let Mr. Drescher chime in on this, but we usually do bids and the bulk of that kind of thing comes in at the beginning of the school year and the way we have our bids set up through, wow, East School Mall, the bid prices have to be honored throughout the year, so we can reorder on the bids as necessary. I don't think we're on, and Mr. Drescher can correct me if I'm wrong and he's texting me here, so, he says we order as needed. So, yeah, we're not-
We're not obligated.
No, now, I will tell you one thing that we are obligated to is going to be difficult is we're working through this issue as well. When we did our fuel bid through the BCIU, we had to estimate our gallons and we are required to take the minimum gallons and we won't need that for diesel fuel for our buses this year.
Is it a certain date, Carol?
It is by the, it is by the end of the school year. So, I do know that Mrs. Batten did order a fill-up so that we could take the maximum amount right now. And I know Mr. Drescher and I have talked, I think we're pretty good on heating oil, although it may impact next year, that we are okay in that area, but we, we have to pay the difference in the gallons that we don't take between the bid price and the market price. And unfortunately, the bid price was higher than the market price is right now. So, the last estimate that I saw from BCIU was unfortunately $44,000, but I do know that by taking that delivery that we're going to be, if we didn't get it today, I think we're going to get it tomorrow and we're going to get it this week, that that will reduce that penalty. I don't know by how much yet. And the other thing, I think the vendor is working to try to mitigate this a little bit. He is going to sell half of what he has on hand because I think some people were concerned that we didn't want him to sell it all in case we actually do come back to school. So, they, it is something that we are following and the BCIU, that bid is done through the BCIU and they're looking at that.
Okay, thank you. The last question-
One other thing too, Mrs. Batten asked me about our GPSs on our buses, whether we could, you know, ask for a reprieve on that. The tough thing for the GPS company is they gave us seven months free with our initial. They just started billing us for that certificate, but I did say, hey, if you don't mind, go back and ask them because if you don't ask, the answer is always no. So, she did copy me on an email to that vendor where she requested, you know, if we could maybe get an extension to the end of the contract or what they might be able to do for us.
Okay, thank you so much. The last question I have is I got quite a few phone calls about our real estate taxes. And I know it's a touchy subject and I, I've seen an email that went out today, that I, I received one today I wasn't too happy about, but are we even thinking or talking about the taxes, real estate taxes? Let me clarify that, as far as perhaps giving a longer period to pay them, a discount period, a longer flat period, or not having our people stuck with paying an extra 33%?
As, as the legal counsel communicated to the board, work is being done at the state level and that we needed to sit tight and let that play out first because the state legislators were in the process of having conversations about that.
Okay, fine, but I wanted it brought out, people would hear it from the district, not from me, because I'm nothing. I mean, they got to hear it from administration. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you to Ms. Torsha for her presentation and also again to Ms. Pitts and Mr. Drescher for responding to some of those questions. I did see one of the other board members had their hand raised and then put it down, so I didn't know if they still had a question. Ms. Hogan, did you still have a question or did you want to move, move on?
We can move on, thank you.
Sure. All right, so just one last, sorry, one last call for any questions on that. Meanwhile, I'll pull up our agenda here. So, our next item, item number 10 is BASD COVID-19 Superintendent and District Administration Powers Resolution.
Yes, Mr. President, the board received a resolution that was drafted that has been done by several districts. Some have not. Some districts, as Sharon believes, that certain things in the proclamation from the governor already addressed it specifically. As you can see on your screen, there is a provision in the proclamation from the governor when he declared a state of emergency, addressing the purchases of supplies and services in response to the emergency. He also addressed certain powers that he was granting to the Secretary of Education, which you see on your screen now, where he have authorized the Secretary to come into part of education to suspend and waive any provisions or law or regulation at his sole discretion, which is kind of what you heard referenced, that we often, while he has a power, have to wait for our guidance on what those provisions are and regulations that are being waived. And then finally, in that proclamation, the governor went on to urge governing bodies and executive officers or political subdivisions, which the school districts are affected by this emergency, to act to meet the necessary current situation, namely the employment of temporary workers, rental equipment and also dealing with contracts, agreements and without regard to time-consuming procedures and formalities that are not mandatory constitutional requirements. With that idea, several districts, for example, Daniel Boone passed something yesterday, Wilson passed their own version in motion, we're giving administration certain levels of authority. Ours is more detailed and tended to be more clear and explicit in its presentation of what is authorized and what is not. Some of those other ones are more broad. The biggest part of this, it allows administration to take action in a timely manner with some things that may be a short turnaround time in nature, but then also requires the Board of School Directors to ratify that decision or they could change it when it comes before them at the next voting meeting. This is drafted to last during a state of emergency, but it is also, can be terminated prior to that by board action also. So, this is not just in perpetuity. It does have an end date targeted at the state of emergency or should the board decide to undo it if they were to pass it this evening. And that's attached to the document. And again, as administration presented earlier, if this is not passed, the main focus is for us to be able to operate in a much more efficient and effective and streamlined manner to be responsive to short turnaround times that come at times from federal, state or local agencies. And at this time, the recommendation is for this to be approved should the board so desire.
All right, with that description and explanation, looking for, this is an item that requires board action either to approve or to vote down. So, is there a motion to take this, take this action on, under consideration?
McQuarreter moves.
Hogan seconds.
All right, so we have a motion and a second and at that, at this time, we will open this up to board discussion. So, and I would please urge all board members, if you have any questions or would like to express an opinion or make a comment on this, to use the raise hand feature and we'll try to proceed as orderly as we can. Looks like at this time, Ms. Nyman has her hand raised and Ms. McQuarreter is in the queue.
Yeah, I'd like to know what limitations are on this, exactly what limitations.
The limitations are those that are described in the resolution. It speaks to what we are allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do and the requirement for the board to ratify it. It speaks to an end date and again, the board at any time can cancel should they be able to approve it tonight. But what's being granted is spelled out in the, with the whereas and the furthermore statements.
I'd like the public to hear exactly what it is.
It's therefore attachment to it. I'm not going to read the whole proclamation. It's attached to board docs. Excuse me, resolution. The now therefore statements spell out what is being, authority is being granted. The whereas statement explains the why and the rationale behind it.
I cannot support anything like this. We are elected officials. Our constituents, our voters of each of our regions has elected us to do a civic duty. We give you this, you can go out and do whatever you want and we have to come back and ratify it. And if we say no to it, we're the ones who look like a fool. I cannot and will not support anything like this.
Well, it doesn't allow me to do anything I want and actually I have more liability in some cases than you do because of my licensure and my credentials by the state. I'm a sworn officer of the state, so I can't break any laws. And I'm subject to losing my license and possible legal and criminal action. So, the threshold is in many cases higher for me.
I don't think so. I think you could go out and you could hire somebody or you could do whatever and bring it back to the board and say, this is what I did, this is what we need to do, we need to ratify it. And the board's put on a position then to either do it or not. And when we vote no, we look like fools to the public. This is our job. This is what we were elected for. If you didn't want to be here, then you shouldn't be on this board, plain and simple.
All right, Ms. Nyman, do you have any additional questions?
Not right now.
All right, then in the queue, I have, Ms. McQuarreter is next. Mr. Hemingway would like to speak after that and then Ms. Hogan.
Yes, so it's important for our superintendents to lead and his cabinet to lead and I, I think that this resolution will help them to be able to do that. They have had their hands full. We've just seen almost two hours of presentations of how busy they are and what they're doing. Sometimes we have to step back and allow them to do their job without tripping over us, without tripping over our emails. And this is one of those times. This is an extraordinary circumstance and I think it will make everybody's jobs easier. And that's like, there's so much stress that we are all going through right now and a way to minimize that stress is to, for a period of time, allow them to go forward with this. I have faith in them. I trust them. I don't think that they're going to go out and make any wild and crazy expenditures. You know, we are hiring some people, but we're all going to be involved. You know, the board is involved with that as well. So, I think it's a good idea.
All right, thank you, Ms. McQuarreter. Just, just to clarify as well, there, there are two, in the resolution itself, it specifies that this is for the walls, schools are mandated to remain closed. So, there is, that is one mechanism that would lead to the conclusion of this resolution if adopted. Also, it could be overturned with a board majority vote if it were adopted and decided later that we wanted to go a different route. That being said, next in the queue, we have Mr. Hemingway and then Ms. Hogan.
Mr. Foose, could you put me in the queue? I can't get my hand up here.
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Brophy will be after Ms. Hogan.
Thank you.
Are we able to, to provide, oh, yeah, it looks like we just unmuted Mr. Hemingway.
All right, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I want to say I've thought long and hard about this. I reviewed the resolution multiple times. I actually reviewed the actual governor's order and I think after reviewing the order itself, it actually gives the administration the latitude to make these streamlined decisions. I do however think we have an obligation to represent the community and we should be fully engaged in our decisions. A lot of these decisions are going to have an impact in our district and our community for many of the years to come. I don't, I don't want you to think it's a trust issue and by no means do I, you know, want this board to, you know, to get in the way for these decisions that need to be done, but I'm sorry, I'm just not comfortable agreeing to this resolution. That's all.
All right, so a statement from Mr. Hemingway and now followed up by Ms. Hogan.
Yeah, I understand my fellow board members' concerns. However, I think the resolution does put enough safeties in place to keep us in a good position as elected officials. We're in a state of emergency and during emergencies, sometimes things move really fast. We do know that the board, especially with what's happening right now, it's difficult, communication is difficult. People are not always able to access their emails timely, which could lead to real delays. So, I think that this is a reasonable request and I am for it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hogan. And Mr. Brophy is next.
Okay, let me start by, like, I want to thank the administration, Dr. Bedden. They've done a yeoman's worth of work here. They really have. I've watched everything, very impressed. This is a very chaotic time and they're stepping up the plate. I also understand with the laws coming in from the state and the federal government, which don't always match, and all the digging you have to do into those to see exactly what, what you can and can't do, especially when it comes down to the school district, handling our contractors, you know, what's, how do we handle them fairly and the best way since they also are our neighbors and our friends. It puts a lot of pressure, it does. However, superintendents have a wide latitude on what to do now, you know, in Pennsylvania law, of a lot of things they can, they can do and without the board's approval. I don't really believe that I was elected to abdicate my authority. I also don't believe, like some of the board members have spoken here, that they're in the way. We're here to put a different perspective on, take a, take a look and help the superintendent. Our job is to, it is oversight, but it's also to put different eyes on it, to maybe catch things that they don't. Do we do that well? I don't know. It's, it's only been a little while I've been here, but I think we can get better. It's, it's only been a little while I've been here, but I think we can get better at it. We don't get better at it by sitting here and saying, okay, the job's too tough. We're going to step aside and let, you know, just let everything go. I just don't believe that's the way to go forward. I don't believe giving up my responsibilities is the way to have it. So I just don't see any way I could support this. And it's not a trust issue. It's not an issue that I don't, I don't think that the, the administration is capable. But I do believe I need to represent the constituency that elected me, and I can't do that by abdicating my responsibilities. Thank you.
Brandon, can I, then again?
Yes, just real quick. First, just as an aside, I mentioned earlier, and my colleague just also utilized the word yeoman. I just want to say that I appreciate Steve Elsier, former board leadership, for making that part of our regular vocabulary. Next, we have Ms. Dieroff, I believe, has her hand raised. And then also, Ms. Nyman just expressed an interest to get back in the queue.
Mr. Foose, my hand raising isn't working, so if I could get in the queue as well.
Okay, so we will go Ms. Dieroff, Ms. Nyman, and Ms. Denon.
Okay, I was elected for my vote, as I said before. And I'm not going to give my decision away at this point. That would make my constituents very happy. I don't think there's any question or anything that needs to be done that can't wait 24 hours, and that's all it would take to call an executive session. I don't feel that I'm in Dr. Bedden's way. I respect and trust him, but I still want to make my own decisions. And I, like I said, in the past, if we had an emergency, emergency come up, which we had, it was mentioned that we don't all look at our emails, well, shame on us right now. I got caught in one not looking at it, and that taught me to check them every day. But even so, before, the secretary used to call and say, we're calling an executive session. Check your emails. So I know that's extra work, but there's always something that can be worked out, and we don't use those type of things for an excuse because we weren't checking our emails. I think that a lot of work went into it. And I think administration has really been doing one bang-up job right now. But everybody knows how I vote when it's time to pay bills, so they shouldn't question my vote on this. I cannot support it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next, we have Ms. Nyman.
I take this very, very seriously. So seriously that I went to my supervisor at work. I said, if there's any type of phone call that I need to take, if I could take it because of this board. We have a look at, and he is fine. I have given authority to Mr. Brophy, and he knows how to get a hold of me at work. So I don't even need 24 hours. If I'm at work because I am an essential employee right now, that I have to be there, I have taken it and given it my authority to Mr. Brophy to contact my supervisor and get me to the phone. So that's how seriously I take this. So I am available all day long, by phone. Mr. Brophy knows how to get a hold of me. My supervisor will get me to the phone. So I will not vote on anything that gives my authority to somebody else. I'm elected official, and that's the way it's going to be.
All right, thanks for that input. Ms. Denon.
Yes, um, under normal circumstances, I would never vote for this resolution because I, too, take my election as a school board member very seriously. But these are extraordinary circumstances, and as the saying goes, they take extraordinary measures. And although I agree that we can, we can certainly all get together within 24 hours, we could probably all get together within 12 hours. The issue for me, and the reason that I'm going to support the resolution, is because it's not about, it's not about can we be available? It's about the extra work that is being put on the administration. And I think that if any of us doesn't think that the people in our administration are working 12, 14, 16-hour days, we're being naive. And this is just one additional thing that we can take off their plate. And when I look at some of, some of the decisions, these are not, these are not huge decisions that, that have big, big consequences, in my opinion. There, there are things like approving the letter to go out to Culbarkdale Township to say that we can still have the, the port-a-potties. So, so they're, they're just kind of almost, almost technical things that, that we have to do. So to have the administration, whether it be the secretarial staff or the, or the superintendent, to try to get a hold of everybody and to be fair to everyone, to let everyone weigh in, and then go ahead and answer all kinds of questions on, on things that I consider are timely issues that are a little bit minor. In this situation, I think it is prudent that we do that because anything that we, as a board, can do to ensure that our administration is taking care of our students and making sure they receive an education, that to me is the priority at this point. So I totally understand we need bills to be paid, and, and we, we should have oversight and hold our superintendent accountable. I respect the opinions of my fellow board members that it's not a trust issue. It's not that they, they don't think that the administration is capable. But I respectfully disagree. I think that in, in this particular time, I can support the resolution.
Thank you. I have Ms. Hogan next. Mr. Hemingway has expressed that he would like to also make another comment. It looks like Ms. Dieroff has her hand raised. And Mr. Up to Grove is indicating that he also would like to make a comment.
Also, me, Brandon, I can't get my hand up.
Mr. Brophy. So we'll go in that order. We'll go Hogan, Hemingway, Dieroff, Up to Grove, Brophy.
Okay, I just meant to take a quick minute to say that I think everyone takes their position as a, as an elected official seriously. And I don't think this is about taking that seriously or a trust issue. I think it's just about difference of opinions. So I want to make sure that anything I said wasn't seen as being taken personally by anyone else. It was certainly not meant that way. It's just an observation. So that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. And I believe we have Mr. Hemingway next.
Okay, can you hear me now, Brandon?
Yes.
Okay. I, I just like to, I appreciate the extra work that administration does provide to the board, but I think that that is work worth spent. You know, I think, I like to think that the board is an integral part of the district. We are important. We're essential employees, if you will. And I don't think that that work, that, that the extra work put in is, I think it's valuable to the board. Also, I mean, I guess it's okay to disagree with Ms. Denon. As, as far as the resolution goes, there are aspects of the resolution that deals with contracts. And it's a little bit more than just making the daily, you know, daily decisions as far as sending out letters and things like that. What I have an issue with is some of the long-term effects that we would be taking away our input with some of the things that could impact the district and our community down the line. So that's, the idea of the resolution, I get, and I can support that. But the content of the resolution, I'm not comfortable with. And again, I think a lot of this authority is already been given to administration through the governor's order. And I don't think a need to have any more resolutions or anything like that. So again, I just, I can't support it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next, Ms. Dieroff.
If I had to do that again, I don't think I could have said it better than Mr. Hemingway. However, if, if we want to criticize each other and all, we got to learn what the rules are. You have to give 24 hours for an executive session if you call one, not 12. And I didn't ask for it to be called by any staff member or anything. Emails are fine, which we get all the time. And I think that's what secretary, they do that type of work. And as far as the letter, I agree. He doesn't have to check with us. That authority was already given to him. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Up to Grove. Mr. Up to Grove is still on mute. Would it be possible for one of the, either the host or co-host to assist with that?
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I read the resolution a couple times. I am not comfortable with it, and for that reason, I would vote no. Because it was, if it's a lot of work, they should have taken this in consideration when he took the job. Things ain't great right now, but it's still work that's got to be done. And us, as board members, have to do that decision for us to be on this board, to relinquish the power. I'm not happy with it at all. The superintendent is doing a great job, and everybody around him is doing a great job. As far as this resolution, I'm voting no on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next, Mr. Brophy.
Okay, just one last quick thing. The administration and Dr. and Dr. Bedden have stepped up to do what they need to do and to get it done. I'm hearing board members here that don't feel that they can step up. I don't, I kind of don't understand that. If it's, if the board, if the superintendent and all the people out there working step up, then the board better be able to step up. That's what we've put in place to do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hogan, I saw your hand was raised. I didn't know if that was left over or if you had another comment.
Yeah, I do have, oh, just a quick comment.
Take your time, because I just got notification, my battery's low. I have to go grab my charger.
Okay, it's going to be quick, sorry. Run fast. Um, I don't think this is about anybody stepping up or not stepping up. Again, I want to just say, I think this is about people just have a difference of opinion, which is fine. And I respect all of my colleagues' opinions. None of this is personal. It's just a difference of opinion, which is why we vote on things, and that's fine. That's really all I wanted to say.
Right. Not sure if anybody else has additional comments. I'm trying to get my charger at the moment. So at this time, are there any additional comments?
So, Mr. Foose?
Yes, sir.
I want to be clear that what I'm walking away from, what I'm getting out of this meeting is, and I think Mr. Brophy touched on it, his last comment, an increased commitment to more members making themselves available in a short time period. And Mrs. Dieroff talked about 24 hours. You know, there are different levels of meaning, and I think that we need to send that out by policy so they understand because, and Mr. Sultanic is still here?
He is.
I want to make sure they understand, and in this case, there's levels of what constitute an emergency, what constitutes a typical three-day notice, and we'll send that out to the board. But when it's an emergency, that is the one that's within 24 hours, correct, Mr. Sultanic? Or is that a special meeting?
A special meeting is 24 hours' notice. A regular scheduled meeting is three days' notice. Executive are 24 hours' notice generally.
So, and I just want to be clear that what we're asking is that when we try to symbol administrative team and all of board members, I don't want to be chastised when the time does not work perfectly for everyone when we try to get the bulk of the people there available so that people don't feel like we're intentionally trying to exclude someone. And that's my ask of the board, to be, be committed to that understanding. As I said at the beginning, and I think we talked about, whether it passes or not is not my focus. It's our ability, and I think Mr. Brophy also touched on it, is efficiency and effectiveness because as we cross numbers and try to meet timelines to get data and information and respond back to the state and the feds on different things, some significant decisions are going to be made regarding finances, but also people and employees in the district. And, you know, as long as we can get it done, that's all that matters. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. You can call for the votes so they can close out this item.
I have one question.
We may have lost him.
Ms. Hogan, go ahead. Step in to keep it moving.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate it. So I can commit to checking my email. So, I do now. And I can totally commit to being available. I just want to know if the rest of the board can also make that commitment.
The quarter can.
I, Jill can, Jill Denon can.
I don't think I would have brought it up if I can.
I can. It's, it's no big deal.
No, no problem.
And I've given the authority to Jim Brophy. He knows how to get a hold of me at work. So if it's during the hours of my work, Jim knows how to get a hold of me.
Well, they got to give 24 hours' notice.
We lost Mr. Foose. But we will, I will withdraw this item so we can close out this meeting that's going longer. I think I'm allowed to pull it to this point. Mr. Sultanic?
Well, technically, since there was a board motion and a second.
Right. Is he back then? If not, Mrs.?
I'll call for the vote.
I'll say, Ms. McWard, are you going to need to, I don't see if he's back. You may need to call.
Dr. Bedden, he's, he's back.
Brandon is back. I see him.
Where?
Brandon called the vote.
Oh, okay.
I did call for the vote.
Brandon.
The, the, this was a call for a vote.
Yeah.
So I think at this point in time, procedurally, it'd be appropriate to have a roll call vote.
Okay. Mrs. Dieroff?
Yes. What, no, wait, wait. What is, yes, was it approval?
A vote of yes would approve the resolution as presented. A vote of no?
No.
Is there?
No.
All right, Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon? Yes. Mr. Brophy?
No.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Mrs. McBrerder?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
No.
Mr. Hemingway?
No.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion fails four five.
Back to you, Mr. Foose. You're on, uh, item 11A.
Looks like he.
He walked away.
Uh, Mrs. McWherter, are you able to step in and the rest of the agenda ask for if there was any old business?
Okay, any, any old business?
No old business.
Are you back, Brandon?
Yes, I'm back.
Public comment number two. And I don't see any hands, Mr. Foose. I see a hand from Nathan Yorgi. You might want to read the.
All right.
You have one speaker, Mr. Foose?
Yes. So, uh, I'll, I'll read this again. On behalf of the School Board of Directors, I would like to welcome you to this meeting. Welcome your attendance and input from stakeholders to assist us with recommendations and decisions related to the Board of Tenaria School District. The procedures and rules for public participation are detailed in the BAST Board Policies 006. Uh, Mr. Yorgi, if you're the only one signed up, you've spoken before. Hopefully, you're aware of these, I've read these earlier.
I am.
I don't want to belabor the point, so, uh, please proceed.
So, with the upheaval and uncertainty due to COVID-19, I'm, I'm curious. Are there any thoughts being given to the impact this has on school closures? Like the Pine Forge Elementary School closure. Uh, I know I'm asking a question and I'm not really giving comments, but I wanted to put it out there. Uh, and then I'll, whatever is the appropriate way we're handling responses in this new paradigm, I'll get my response that way.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else, um, indicating that they'd like to speak during public comment? All right. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move forward. So, the next, uh, the next item is board comment. And since I had the fun experience of, um, dropping off of the call before a vote, I'll go ahead and take this opportunity to go ahead and, and speak what I was going to say before that vote took place. Um, we are in unprecedented times. It's been, it's been said repeatedly. I think some of the words that we've heard tonight are daunting, challenging. It's been compared to flying a plane while it's being built. Uh, people have said they've never seen anything like this in their 26 years, uh, in their profession. We heard during, um, we heard previously, uh, our solicitor say that in 40 years, uh, this is also something that, um, is, is fairly new terrain for him as well. Um, I don't think the, I don't, I don't think we can really drive home the point enough that this is, this is a new arena. And public education was not built, uh, to handle what it, what it is that we're doing right now. We're, we're doing a great job. The district is doing a fantastic job of trying to navigate these waters. Uh, they've been in constant communication with us. Um, and we're just one of many. I mean, you, we heard tonight that, um, one of our administrators has fielded over 500 emails in a week's time. That is un, unbelievable to hear. And to, to be able to continue to deliver education and keep the focus on our students, um, is, is astounding and commendable. And I, I appreciate all of the work that, that has been going into this, um, that, that frankly, we, we just weren't prepared for. No, no public school district was prepared for this. I, I had thought about this long and hard. I read through the resolution numerous times. It's already been voted on, so it's kind of a moot point. But in that resolution, uh, there were seven, seven different times that it was mentioned that the board would be ratifying or approving things. So, so saying that we're abdicating our responsibility, in my opinion, is just, is just not the case. And I, I think we heard similar, um, during our executive session. It also says six different times that, um, administration is given some flexibility to do things that are required by law on a short timeframe. And we've heard throughout these presentations, I mean, this, this is a three-hour meeting. We're going on three hours, just getting updates tonight. There, there is so much work going on behind the scenes right now. It, it's hard to even try to, to put into perspective what has been going on. And, and the fact that people are dealing with this while they're also trying to manage their day-to-day work. I mean, there, many of us are working remotely. Some people are unemployed, which is, um, in and of itself, a, a pretty trying time. There are people that are, that are still reporting to work. My, my wife being one of them. We heard one of our board members saying the same. I know other board members are still reporting to work, either because their place of work hasn't shut down or because they're considered to be essential personnel. Um, trying to juggle all of that, and, and if you have a child in school right now and you're trying to, to, um, help them continue to receive education, it, it is extremely difficult to navigate all of this. I, I calculated it. I received about 500 emails since the time school was shut, uh, declared to be shut down until today. Last year, when we were talking about, um, the potential agreement with CRES and, and, uh, Pine Forge was, was at the center of the discussion, I had half of the emails that we have now, and it didn't all need to be acted on. A lot of them were people weighing in on things. That also includes all the different updates from the elementary schools and things of that nature. I've received 500 emails in the past few weeks. One of our administrators just said he had 500 in the past week. These are, this is, to think that, that we need to get in the way of that, I don't think is our function. I don't think that's our function at all. I think that we're here to, to, um, help support public education, to help deliver a service that is a public good, uh, that is, that is, um, providing a great thing to, to students and, and future generations. And right now, we're trying to do it in a way that the system wasn't designed for. It was designed for in-class, uh, brick and mortar. You're sitting in a classroom. Our teachers have lesson plans. They prepare for that. They're ready for that. Um, as a board, we review things. We set principles. We set guidelines. We set goals. That's what we do. Our job is not to micromanage the administration. And we're, to say that we've been flexible and that we've been navigating this, uh, well, I, on the one hand, I want to give some credit. There has been a great deal of collaboration and work on behalf of our school board. I also need to point out that there were two issues that were, that were time-sensitive and both took well over 24 hours to get responses from all board members. There were, after about 48 hours, still questions rolling in from several board members about things that didn't even need our approval. So to think that we're going to turn around and have, um, these executive sessions or these emergency meetings in 24 hours' time, I sure hope we do, because the administration demands out of us at this point. And, and the students, my own children, demand this of us. If we're not going to, we've already decided not to adopt the resolution. So, any decisions that need to be made that, that have a, a clear time constraint, um, there's no excuse. We need to be looking at our email. I have it on my phone. Every email that comes in, I get it. I read it. I decide whether or not I need to do something about it. And I juggle my work and my kids and everything else going on in my life, just like everyone else during this crisis is dealing with. It's not abdicating our responsibility. That's nonsense to me. It clearly said in that resolution that this was for the time period of the, um, while there is an emergency ongoing. We also could overturn it with a board majority vote, which really would only happen if the administration was doing things that we found completely unsavory. I don't have that expectation. I don't believe that they would do that. I believe that there, this is their career. This is their livelihood. They've been doing this for decades, most of them. They're aware of the financial situation. We, we got an update on it tonight. The, the finances look horrendous. This is going to be really difficult over the next several years. To think that, that the administration might make decisions that would impact, that would negatively, uh, impact public education, which they'd made their career of, I, I, I just don't, I don't see that. I have a completely different perspective on it. I think that, um, we need to do what we can to help get through this, uh, to help get through this crisis. And since it's already been decided on, I absolutely have the expectation that people will be responding in a very timely manner. You don't need a phone call from me. You need, you need to respond to emails. We need to respond to, uh, there have been phone calls made that haven't been responded to. I have called people that haven't even called me back. So, I sure hope that we take this very seriously because it demands it. And, and the children of this district who are receiving an education and the parents who are trying to juggle very difficult things, grandparents, guardians, anybody who is dealing with this right now is dealing with a lot. And I really hope that we're up to that.
Mr. Foose, your, uh, three minutes has passed. I'm sorry.
I think I'm good. Thank you.
I would like to respond.
I have Mr. Brophy next in the queue.
Mr. Foose. I, I'm going to give you a response to this pretty quick. Uh, I, I don't appreciate what I just went through. So let me tell you. You were a board member, the same as the other eight of us, although you were president. I really don't appreciate, I've lost votes and I take them. What you're telling us is you're sitting here lecturing us because you lost the vote. I really would appreciate in the future that this doesn't happen, especially with 80 participants on this, you know, on this listening to what's going on. So, in the future, please, you want to have this kind of conversation afterwards? I'm all for it, but not in an open meeting.
In the future, I'd like to have this discussion before a vote takes place. But I understand that given the technology and the barriers to that, 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 that wasn't possible tonight.
It's an excuse, Mr. Foose.
I'm going to call it that, sir. Sure. Is there anyone else in the queue? Mr. Updugrove?
Yeah. Brandon, I don't think that was acceptable, what you said. I know you've already lost this vote, but if you can't take the pressure, there's another reason you should be doing this. Maybe not president of this board, because that was not called for what you just lectured us on.
Is there anyone else in the queue?
Yeah, let me take a shot.
Ms. Nyman, I have you next in the queue.
I don't appreciate it either, Brandon. I'm taking time out of my work to make myself available. My boss doesn't have to allow that, but he is under these circumstances. So, I am saying wipe off the smirk off your face that you've had. Apologize to everybody and don't ever let it happen again. We are a board of nine, not just you and what you want. We are a board of nine and we all have a say.
Is there anyone else wishing to get into the queue? All right, seeing none, I believe we conclude.
I have, sorry.
Yes, Ms. Hogan?
Sorry, I assumed you could see my hand raised. Um, yeah, so, on this topic, I just want to say, um, I think Mr. Foose is, he's allowed to have his opinion and personal attacks are just really not okay by anyone on the board. We should all be acting professional. And on another topic, um, I did have some families reach out to me with questions about the date of exposure, for the GES COVID exposure letter that was sent home. And they also had some questions about why that wasn't sent to our entire school community and just to GES parents. So, I figured I'd just, I figured that's probably a quick answer, but I.
We, we followed up, the guidance of DOH. And DOH was very clear that you back map. And we actually included an entire school, even though that wasn't required by DOH, because we extended the period included, included 14 days, even after our school had dismissed. So, when doing that, we did out of abundance of caution, went ahead and provided it to the entire school community and anyone that we had any inclination had been there. Honestly, it was just an awareness from DOH's consultation with us that they believe that, given the amount of time we've been out of school, that there was no threat at the time, but still agreed to just make people aware in case someone had something happen that we had not been told about. But based on the talent and information we've been provided, uh, we actually communicated with more people than required based on DOH's guidance. Every single concern that has been brought forward, even though now I've had so many in conversation with DOH, I can almost predict what they're going to say, uh, we still call. Uh, I own every call to DOH, either by phone call or email myself. And we follow their guidance. Even things that we've uncovered on social media and indirectly that haven't been reported to us, we follow up with DOH. Uh, we don't change our pattern of consulting them. They are the healthcare experts, we're not.
Thank you, Dr. Bedden. I just wanted to bring it up publicly because I felt that a public response would keep any rumors down or anything like that. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, I just had, uh, one quick comment that we are a professional board. And, and although in, um, when we're having conversations, we typically use first names. But when we are on the board, I think we should stick to our appropriate titles. Dr. Bedden, Mrs. McWherter, Mr. Foose. And I, I see this over and over again and it's, um, denigrating when the inappropriate title is used. Or the, is not, when the appropriate title is not used.
I go by Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, sorry, Mr. Hemingway. Uh, all right, is there anyone else, uh, wishing to speak during this public commentary? All right, I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time. So we will move forward with the agenda. Uh, next, we have upkeep, upcoming meeting dates. Um, all of our upcoming meeting dates can be found on the ASD website calendar. Uh, obviously, um, during these, these times, uh, please check often. Meetings may be added as necessary, given the circumstances. Uh, so, so please check frequently through all communication channels as, as far as, um, when board meetings might, might be added.
Mr. Foose, I, I'm getting a remote, um, notification that Mrs. Deroff would like to speak.
Sure. Yeah, let's, um, I don't, I don't want to, uh, omit anyone. Ms. Deroff, uh, please, uh, provide your comment.
I'm sorry, I did it four times, Mr. Foose. I don't know why it wasn't going through. Uh, I just wanted to say, um, maybe we should re, review some of our policies because I was told before when I did it that if we had a question, we were supposed to let administration know ahead of time. So, that might be a good thing to review for us to all reuse some of our, our policies because I don't think that was done tonight either. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So, we've already made the announcement of upcoming meetings at this point. Uh, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Nyman.
Ms. Nyman, uh, is there a second?
McWherter seconds.
Ms. McWherter seconds. Uh, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.